Buenas tardes, el comité de Asuntos de la Salud y Asuntos Veterans es llamado a ordenar. El tiempo es 2:02 de este jueves, 17 de abril de 2025. Gracias a todos los que nos acompañaron esta tarde, tanto en persona como a través del streaming live para la audiencia pública y audiencia confirmada. El comité se convocó a recibir testimonio y la programación de Dr. Krista Blankenship para servir como miembro del Consejo de Trujeros del Hospital de Guam Memorial durante un mandato de seis años efectivo según la confirmación legislativa. Además, esta audiencia está programada para recibir testimonio público sobre las medidas legislativas siguientes: el proyecto número 8938 COR introducido por el senador Sabina Flores Perez, que propone agregar un nuevo capítulo, 48, en la División 2, título 10, anotado en el código de Guam. Esta medida busca aclarar las protecciones para la responsabilidad por donaciones de alimentos. El proyecto 9538 introducido por el senador Tina Rose Munya Barnes, que propone amendar la ley existente. Esta legislación aspira a autorizar a las instalaciones de cuidados de niños a operar como centros de cuidados intergeneracionales. La noticia adecuada de esta audiencia fue diseminada a todos los senadores, partes interesadas y medios de comunicación locales el 10 de abril y el 15 de abril de 2025, en concordancia con la ley gubernamental abierta. También se publicaron notícias en el sitio web oficial del comité de Guam en el portal de noticia pública de Guam. Todos los materiales relacionados con las procedencias de hoy han sido subidos al drive del comité y están disponibles en copia hard según solicitud. Una grabación completa de esta audiencia estará disponible en el canal de YouTube de la red de medios de comunicación del comité de Guam. A este tiempo, me gustaría reconocer y bienvenecer a los miembros del comité que están presentes con nosotros hoy, el senador Sean Gumitatau y el senador Tina Rose Munya Barnes. También nos acompañan el senador Sabina Perez, el senador Theresa Lahy y el senador Chris Barnett. Agradezco a mis colegas, partes interesadas y miembros del público por su presencia hoy y por tomarse el tiempo para participar en este importante proceso legislativo. Su participación es esencial para formular una política pública sana para nuestra isla. Al pasar por la agenda de hoy, me gustaría recordar a todos que cada senador tendrá cinco minutos para hacer preguntas, para proporcionar comentarios. El autor de cada proyecto tendrá diez minutos para presentar un resumen de sus medidas. Estos límites de tiempo ayudan a mantener una discusión ordenada mientras aseguramos que cada voz tiene la oportunidad de ser oída. Comenzaremos esta audiencia de la tarde con testimonio sobre la programación de Dr. Krista Blankenship para servir como miembro del Consejo de Trujeros del Hospital de Guam Memorial. Antes de invitar al candidato a la mesa, primero bienvenimos a cualquier miembro del público que quiera ofrecer testimonio sobre la nominación de Dr. Blankenship. Y si no hay uno, Dr. Blankenship. Lilian, ¿se proporcionará testimonio? No. ¿Se proporcionará testimonio? Está bien. Empezaremos entonces con el administrador de GMH, CEO Lilian Posadas, con testimonio sobre el candidato.
Gracias y buenas tardes a todos, senadores. En nombre del organismo gobernante, el Consejo de Trujeros y también el gerente ejecutivo, los empleados, el manejo también y el personal médico, y, por supuesto, los pacientes y las familias que servimos. Te agradecemos por esto y realmente y verdaderamente agradecemos a Dr. Krista Blankenship por ofrecer su servicio y su talento y su experiencia como farmacéuta para unirse a nuestro organismo gobernante. Y ella representará al comunidad de salud aliada como es en la legislación que permite y en los reglamentos que necesitamos que haya alguien de la comunidad de salud aliada. Así que estamos muy, muy agradecidas de que Dr. Krista se unirá a nuestro equipo en el hospital para ayudarnos a continuar forjando las necesidades del hospital para que podamos continuar manteniendo el funcionamiento. Así que muchas gracias por esta oportunidad. Estoy aquí para responder a cualquier pregunta si las tienes. Gracias.
Gracias, Madam Posadas. Dr. Blankenship, puede proceder con sus comentarios y sobre su programación.
Por favor, solo me llames Krista. Podemos dejar el doctor. Espero ser miembro de este consejo. Me gustaría asistir en maximizar la seguridad del paciente, sostener la calidad de la atención de salud, mejorar el hospital. Me gustaría ayudar lo mejor posible a lograr la estabilidad financiera y soy una gran proponenta de la responsabilidad. Creo que todos deberían ser responsables. He sido farmacéuta, farmacéuta licenciada desde 2001. He trabajado en Mega Drug Pharmacy desde 2019. No creo que vuelva a los Estados Unidos porque amo mucho esta isla y a su gente. Han sido tan graciosos y maravillosos para mí y apreciados por cualquier oportunidad de atención médica que podamos darles. Antes de venir aquí, fui farmacéuta en una cadena de supermercados de siete años y luego fui farmacéuta para Kmart Pharmacy durante 13 años, en los cuales fui manager, un manager regional, un director y luego un manager educativo antes del declive de Kmart. Y cuando decidí venir aquí, cambiar mi vida e intentar ayudar médicamente al pueblo de la isla.
Gracias, Dr. Blankenship, Krista, por aceptar esta nominación. Supongo que vamos a proceder con preguntas y voy a empezar con algunas y luego mis colegas seguirán. Gracias de nuevo por su voluntad de servir en el Consejo de Trujeros de GMH, especialmente durante este momento crítico para nuestro único hospital público. ¿Qué te compelsa específicamente a aceptar esta programación, considerando todo lo que está pasando con GMH? ¿Por qué?
Cuando veo las noticias, quiero ayudar y espero que pueda ayudar puramente. Lo que me impulsó es simplemente pensando que tal vez puedo ayudar con la situación y la prensa mala y las noticias malas que escucho. Esa es mi esperanza.
¿Cuáles son tus tres principales prioridades para GMH?
Está bien, así que la seguridad del paciente es lo más importante para mí. Ha habido algunas noticias últimamente sobre alguien que fue desechado y luego cosas malas sucedieron. Quiero averiguar por qué. No quiero que estas cosas sucedan. Quiero la mejor atención médica posible. Trabajando en farmacia, puedo ver dónde podrían ser mejor las políticas en el hospital donde nos llegan las cosas a hacer del hospital. Y creo que el hospital podría usar algo de mejora. Sí, hablamos de mudarse a un nuevo hospital. Tenemos un hospital que necesitamos mantener y asegurarnos de que se cumple con las regulaciones.
Porque siempre está en las noticias, ¿dónde crees que el nuevo hospital debe ser construido? ¿Cuál es tu opinión?
Creo que debería estar en el área general de donde está ahora. No soy una proponenta de que se mueva todo el camino a Manila. Creo que tienes médicos que entregan bebés que necesitan estar cerca del hospital donde su práctica está. Solo creo que ese es el mejor entorno para el traslado.
Gracias por tu sinceridad. GMH actualmente emplea más de 1,200 personal. En tu opinión, ¿tiene un trabajo estructurado adecuadamente o hay áreas donde usted piensa que pueden ser excesivas, redundantes o que podrían beneficiarse de la outsourcing?
He pasado mucho tiempo en el hospital con mi madre en la que sé que hay lugares donde podríamos regularizar el personal un poco mejor, pero creo que en términos de cirugía siempre fui feliz con la ayuda de cirugía que recibió. A 92 necesitaba más cuidado y siempre sentí que recibí eso. Así que estoy segura de que hay lugares para cortar, pero honestamente tengo que ser parte de este comité para saber más estadísticas.
Voy a abrir el piso a mis colegas y luego cuando cerremos tendré un par de preguntas. Senador Gumitatau.
Gracias, Madam Presidente, y gracias, Krista, por estar de acuerdo en servir. Con todo el clima de hoy, te commendaré públicamente por querer hacer esto. Hay muchas cosas que están sucediendo que muchas personas estarán de un lado de este problema de GMH o del otro, pero te commendamos por avanzar y servir. ¿Puedo preguntarte, en tu opinión profesional, bueno, eres farmacéuta, en términos de tus habilidades, ¿esperas que puedas traer parte del trabajo que haces o las cosas que haces diariamente que podrías traer a GMH en términos de cómo trabajan probablemente un componente bastante grande del hospital, que son las medicinas y drogas?
Sí, recibimos muchos prescripciones de médicos y prescripciones con personas que se descargan y puedo ver muchos lugares donde podría haber mejoras en lo que pasa. A menudo tenemos un difícil momento de identificar cuál médico escribió la prescripción. Creo que una de las primeras cosas que me gustaría ver es que cada médico en el personal haya una copa para que puedan copiar la prescripción y firmar la prescripción. Creo que podríamos ayudar con la guerra contra las drogas si usamos el PMP de la isla potencialmente más. Así que sí, creo que podría traer mi conocimiento y habilidades de trabajo para ayudar.
El consejo representa un espectro bastante amplio de nuestra comunidad. No has estado en esta comunidad mucho tiempo. ¿Crees que eso va a ser un desprecio o un beneficio para ti en términos de tus ojos hacia los problemas que enfrentan los GMHA?
Creo que podría ser un beneficio. Primero, no he hecho alianzas, así que eso puede ser beneficioso. Y sé cómo se hace las cosas en los Estados Unidos, así que veo cómo se hace allí, veo cómo se hace aquí. Podemos reunirnos y mejorar.
Solo tengo una pregunta más y en términos de trabajar con el equipo de GMHA en algún punto como miembro del consejo, ¿vas a seguir con la política o planeas...? Espero que no estés a micro manejar y supongo que mi tarea para ti si estás y cuando estés confirmado es que no vas a salir por el hospital y decirle a la gente qué hacer, porque espero que estés en la política.
No, tengo más cosas que hacer que manejar así. Tengo mi trabajo en tiempo completo en Mega Drug que me mantiene y soy la presidenta de la asociación farmacéutica, así que sí.
Bueno, nuevamente, espero que a lo largo de tu mandato, si estás confirmado, que pasarás mucho tiempo para escuchar las preocupaciones de la gente de Guam y, obviamente, ser su defensor en el consejo de GMHA. Así que gracias de nuevo por avanzar y querer servir en este consejo importante. Gracias, Madam Presidente.
Gracias, senador Gumitatau. Senador Munya Barnes.
Señor presidente, gracias por darme la oportunidad. Antes de empezar mi línea de cuestiones, solo quiero tomar el tiempo para agradecer a Krista por avanzar a la escena, por voluntariar, para ayudar al Consejo de Trujeros con el hospital y agradecer al administrador por estar aquí y sé que recibió apoyo de sus colegas médicos en la parte trasera, así que gracias por estar aquí también. No es un trabajo fácil, especialmente con lo que pasa, ¿verdad? Pero creo que una de las preguntas que quería comenzar es, ¿cómo usará su experiencia como farmacéuta para ayudar a GMH a mantener suficientes suministros de medicina y equipos y si sea para la gestión de dolor básica o para suministros esenciales como el algodón?
Ya sé que ayudamos a veces a Mega Drug a proveer al hospital cuando es en necesidad emergente de una medicina. Así que creo que necesitamos que todas las farmacias trabajen juntas para ayudar a proveer al hospital en situaciones como esa. Tienes a un paciente que está en una medicina que no es regular, así que lo tenemos, ayudamos. Creo que trabajar juntos ayudará.
Está bien, gracias. Sabes que quiero compartir contigo que esta situación viene con mucho presión del público que merecen la mejor calidad de cuidado, ¿verdad? ¿Cómo responderías a las acusaciones de pacientes y miembros familiares que sienten que la calidad de cuidado que recibieron puede ser inferior?
Creo que necesita ser investigado y investigado justamente. Como dices, no tengo alianzas, así que cuando alguien viene con una acusación como esa... Trabajé en HR, tuvimos que entrevistar ambos lados y luego tomar una decisión. Así que creo que necesitas tomar todos los hechos de todos los lados y llegar a una conclusión de esa manera.
Tengo una pregunta más, Madam Presidente, si me permites. Sabes, Krista, tienes una gran operación llenada de muchos empleados dedicados. ¿Cómo ayudarás a reclutar y mantener el mejor y más brillante talento con el mismo espíritu de asegurar la mejor calidad de cuidado posible para nuestro hospital, nuestro único hospital público?
Necesitas recompensar a la gente que está haciendo su trabajo excelente y asegurarte de que saben que se aprecian. Y cuando construyes ese tipo de entorno, la gente quiere quedarse y la gente quiere hacer su mejor. Nadie viene a trabajar todos los días y dice, oh, solo quiero, quiero hacer lo peor. No quiero hacer... La gente quiere ser apoyada y quieren ser celebrados por el buen trabajo que están haciendo. Creo que ese es el número uno que debes hacer allí. En términos de reclutar, necesitamos publicar notícias. Necesitamos hacer que todos sepan que este es el mejor hospital, mejor opción en la isla y aquí es donde quieren trabajar.
Gracias, muchas gracias, Krista. Y como dije anteriormente, realmente aprecio que avances a la mesa, para voluntariar, para hacer esto. No es un trabajo fácil, pero dijo algo anteriormente antes de que la audiencia comenzara sobre amar nuestra isla y amar a la gente y querer quedarse aquí y este es tu nuevo hogar y aquí es donde quieres estar para ayudar y yo realmente creo eso en el corazón y me arrepentiría si no compartiera con usted que quiero darle ese apoyo. Así que espero que la presidenta mirará su portfolio y vea si podemos entrar en la agenda de sesión, nuestra próxima agenda de sesión, para que podamos mirar, tomando su experiencia, no solo como farmacéuta, sino su amor y respeto por nuestra comunidad y querer compartir. Así que te agradezco, te respeto y realmente creo en mi corazón que harás tu mejor para ayudar a servir a la comunidad de Guam. Así que, Madam Presidente, gracias por darme la oportunidad y decir que apoyaré los esfuerzos. Adiós.
Gracias, senador Munya Barnes. También me gustaría reconocer la presencia de mi colega, la vicepresidenta del comité, vicepresidente Tony Adams. Senador Terlahi.
Señor presidente, gracias, Dr. Krista, por estar dispuesta a servir en esta situación y gracias, Lilian, CEO, por su testimonio. También quiero agradecerle, fue Dr. Krista quien nos ayudó con el proyecto Nalaxon, asegurándonos de que se hiciera correctamente y se implementa ahora, así que realmente quiero agradecerle. Eso es para combatir la adicción, quiero decir, la overdose. Es en realidad muy disponible ahora a través de los esfuerzos de la salud comportamental de Guam y bienestar y otros. Así que, señor presidente. ¿Trabajas en contrato o en cualquier capacidad en GMH?
No, soy farmacéuta en tiempo completo en Mega Drug y cuando necesitan a alguien para llenar el rol de salud comportamental porque ese farmacéuta está en vacaciones, tomaré algunas horas allí. No sé si la salud comportamental es parte de GMH.
No, está bien. Está bien, quería saber eso porque estoy encontrando que tenemos varios miembros del consejo que en realidad están o en contrato o trabajan para GMH, pero estoy contenta de que sea la situación con usted. Cuando dijo que deberíamos usar el PMP para combatir o para asistir a la guerra contra las drogas, ¿no se está usando en GMH?
Recibo prescripciones a veces para sustancias controladas y parece que a veces podría ser alguien que tal vez el prescribiendo hubiera sabido si usaran el PMP que no deberían recibir esa medicina porque están en algo similar o es un problema persistente. Así que no sé si se está usando, no quiero decir que no se está usando, pero eso sería uno de mis cosas si estuviera en este consejo, es asegurarse de que se está usando.
Está bien, ¿puede explicarle para el público qué es eso?
Oh, está bien, así que es un programa de monitoreo de prescripciones que está en línea para la isla de Guam. También pueden buscar Hawaii y los servicios militares. Muestra qué medicinas o sustancias controladas. Si miramos al paciente, te mostrará exactamente lo que han obtenido, cuándo han obtenido, qué farmacia, qué doctor. Así que podemos rastrear y decir, oh, esta persona tiene un problema, así que deberíamos llamar a ese doctor y dejarlo saber y tal vez anular esta prescripción.
Gracias. ¿Tiene algún problema si estuviera en el consejo para responder a la legislatura cuando hay problemas con GMH?
No, porque creo en la responsabilidad. Si alguien tiene una pregunta, creo en la transparencia, responder esa pregunta y tener las cosas en el abierto.
Appreciate that. Almost always, our hearings, we have the administration represented, but very rarely are any board members here, except for, of course, we have the chief medical officer, but those are all management at the hospital. So I appreciate that and if you would consider that, I think when it's necessary or you think it would be helpful. There are several things that, you know, there are so many good things that GMH does and it should be celebrated, I agree. It's just very hard when the headlines kind of, we're seeing a lot of negative things too. Some of these beyond their control, but some of these I still think within their control or these are decisions that management is going to make unless the board questions them or the board steers them another way, which I think you have that full power to do. And do you have any qualms in using that? I mean, in questioning the management, because, Neil, these are all your kind of peers, professionals, who are you, we are working with?
No, creo que si hay la situación, la situación apropiada que surge, deberían ser preguntadas, deberían tener que responder.
All right, señor presidente. There's a, so there's a couple issues, like, for example, in the most recent meeting, they talked about pharmacists, in fact, that there was, I guess, an unannounced promotion or someone was questioning, unannounced promotions, qualifications change. I am in the middle of a FOIA that's due today to GMH for above-step recruitments of non-medical professionals. So this was an issue even during COVID that I had questioned them on and it continues today that there are still above-step promotion, above-step recruitments for brand-new employees sometimes, sometimes for existing employees, above-step recruitments into another position. And these are for non-medical professionals. And then we had the whole oversight hearing regarding the medical professionals who's, who are getting paid for three different positions for the same 24-hour period. And so those are things, I think, within the board's discretion. It's within the board's discretion whether, you know, you're going to pay the nurses the above, the increments that they are, I think, have been, are supposed to be paid, but not always, but they said it's subject to the availability of funds. So for me, the funding at GMH, it's all a matter of what is the priority, right? And the board, I think, needs to keep a very close track of what the priorities are and how that authority is being used. And we have physicians out in the community who insist that GMH is overstaffed. I'm not sure whether that's true, but I just think that it was questionable, the pay for physicians and one of the board's powers is also to determine, well, it's the board, I'm sorry, it's the management team who's going to determine who gets the on-call position and who gets on-call. And I've got some calls from my, to my office, you know, questioning, how are they making that decision? They don't announce it, it's not competitive, they just pretty much pick, I think, I'm not sure. But if you could just check into that, I think all the physicians on Guam want to be treated fairly. They want to be given opportunity to make money and especially, you know, if there's a person getting paid on one position instead of three positions. I don't know, if you could just check the news and you'll see these things that I'm talking about, actually, check their minutes. Those are also in there. We've also got our oversight hearings that are up on YouTube that you could also review to see past issues and the, and the responses that we have received from GMH. So hearing all that, ¿tienes alguna preocupación sirviendo en el consejo?
Mi preocupación es que quiero aprender todo lo que necesito aprender y quiero hacer el trabajo correctamente.
All right, and the board assigns, the board, I mean, the, the board members get assigned out into committees, so they do a lot of work in these committees and I really commend them, so it's a detailed work, a lot of time. So I'm not sure which committee you'll be on, but yeah, I know that you're, it's a big commitment that you are making, so I want to thank you again. And thank you for all your work on the pharmacy board as well, keeping us all in line. The pharmacy board really stepped up during COVID, so I really want to thank them. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Senator Terlahi. And just so you know, Dr. Blankenship, those kinds of concerns that she was bringing up are some of the concerns that we discussed in the OFB meeting this past week and will continue to discuss when we meet again next week regarding GMH's budget. So, thank you. I did want to follow up though on, on one question, since we are bringing up issues with the Guam Memorial Hospital. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services has required GMH to submit a corrective action plan. That deadline is coming up on May 7th and it's related to technology issues and their IT. And I know you were talking about implementing different things to make things more efficient, especially within the pharmacy department. So I want to know, because you didn't mention IT as one of your priorities, how far up is that in your priorities, having, having or knowing now that they have to submit this corrective action plan in less than a month?
That's high up. If you don't have good IT, you're at a disadvantage. And I can see where upgrading IT could really help that hospital.
Well, thank you. It really is one of their top priorities. I think it was number two on your list of immediate needs and it being extremely urgent. Senator Sabina Perez.
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Solis. And thank you, Krista, for accepting this nomination. It's a six-year term. Are you ready for that?
Yes, I'll disclose a little something personal. I moved here, I fell in love, I'm married into a Chamorro family. I understand Chamorro culture. I've tried to learn the language and I took care of my 92-year-old mother-in-law, so I am ready to stay.
Okay, great to hear. Are you familiar with the Guam Code Annotated as far as the duties of the board?
He read, I still have a lot to learn and absorb.
Yes, so, okay, so you're going in it with eyes of... Yes. So, okay, so you're going in it with eyes open?
Yes.
Eyes wide open. Okay, that's good to hear because one of the things is that the board can be sued. And so it is very serious business. But I do appreciate your optimism and your willingness to jump into the fire because I believe that there is a lot of issues, right? And I'm sure you've heard a lot of that in the years that you've been here. You know, running the gamut of basically solvency, right? The, the issue of how to obtain enough funding for a community, um, community hospital, which across the U.S. has always been an issue, I think, is, is making sure there's money, enough money available. And, you know, we heard from my colleagues about some of the biggest issues, right? As far as, you know, IT, as far as personnel. Those are areas which can really help with the, the solvency of Guam Memorial Hospital, I believe. And I'm looking forward to your contributions in that area. And looking over your packet, you do have, you know, you were a professor at UNC?
Adjunct professor, yes.
And you've also served as a pharmacist too as well? And I could see that from your answers that you are, have management skills as well. As far as serving on boards, have you had, had experience in serving on a board in, in the U.S.? So this will be your first board?
Yes. I have a lot to learn.
Okay. And, you know, I guess mentorship is really critical. Is there anyone that you're going to turn to in regards to getting a, I guess, overcome the steep learning curve?
I plan on going in, looking at everyone's strengths and finding my mentor. I have not decided on a mentor yet.
Yeah, that's good because I think having that perspective is really important when you're coming into a job as difficult as this. So I do appreciate that. But again, you know, feel free to approach us, senators. We do have some, some knowledge base in regards to this. And, you know, we do want to support you and your efforts in, in making our hospital stronger. So I have no further questions at this time. Thank you.
Senator Barnett?
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak. And thank you, Dr. Krista, for your willingness to serve. I'll tell you, most people run from the fire. So it's very refreshing when we get people who want to run into it. Especially, I'm encouraged by just hearing about your thirst for accountability. And I kind of wanted to expand on Senator Lahi's comments about the above-step recruitment for non-medical personnel. As this was posted March 27, 2025, and it's a above-service or above-step recruitment for a Personnel Services Administrator. And I'm not sure if this is for an existing employee who's going to make a transfer to this above-step or a brand-new employee. But I think just generally the public, when we read about the Chair of the Health Committee giving GMH an F, when we read about just the, the constant parade of problems at the hospital, this type of thing doesn't sit well with the, the people of Guam. So can you just give your thoughts generally on above-step recruitment being used to hire not just non-medical personnel? But I think people would argue that a Personnel Service Administrator is not necessarily a hard position to fill, nor does it, in my opinion, warrant an above-step recruitment.
I think that people should be hired based on management, merit and ability. And I think I'm hoping that in that recruitment or hirement, I'm really hoping that that was taken into consideration. But I, I think you should prove yourself in your job to be promoted.
You mentioned that as a pharmacist, you sometimes are asked to fill prescriptions. And then when you, I guess, I'm just putting this together based on your comments, when you vet the prescription against the, the PM?
PMP.
PMP, sometimes there's, there's a red flag. What do you do in those instances or what are you obligated to do?
I call the doctor and I tell them, did you see this? Or I'll call their family doctor, their, their general practitioner and go, hey, somebody's not being totally honest here. That's just...
Is that the extent of the reporting that you're required to do? Or you, or is anybody in any situation who's aware of that type of possible infraction? Are you required or obligated to inform any authorities or?
I mean, if they stole prescriptions or called in forged or fake prescriptions, I would have to call law enforcement. But in the other, it's, it's best to let all doctors involved know what's going on.
I'm not a doctor, but is that part of the process when you make a prescription? Do they normally check that or is that something that happens on your end?
It happens 100% on our end with any controlled substance.
Okay.
It should happen with any prescriber on the island.
Thank you. You know, there was a, there was a story in the media earlier this month and it was about members of the Board of Trustees who have an issue with just the legislature, I think generally and then specifically with us asking questions. And I'm just going to read some of the comments here. They tell us we're incompetent. That means they want us to make chicken soup out of, pardon my language, chicken crap. And, and just that kind of thing. But I, I wanted to ask your, your thoughts because, you know, if, if the hospital was doing great and if it was an A, you know, I, I'm pretty sure we wouldn't have any questions. But in trying to get to the solutions and, you know, first you have to identify the problems. And I think that's, that's the part of the process that might be uncomfortable for some of the board members. So the question is just twofold. And I know you kind of answered it with Senator Lahi. But just generally, how do you feel about showing up to the hearings as a potential board member and providing a testimony? And then just what are your thoughts, I guess, generally on lawmakers and, and the ability that we have to ask questions? And do you think that's offensive in any way?
I don't think that's offensive. I think that if you're doing your job, you're being honest, you should not be fearful of answering questions. I have no problem showing up with these meetings. And I would hope that if we were having problems at the hospital, perhaps you might have some input that might help something if we couldn't find an answer to the problem.
Are you aware of some instances that have happened with other board members serving on other boards and commissions, specifically the Chamorro-Lantrist Commission in which the governor had fired two members? One, I believe, because she said he didn't answer her phone call. And then the other, I wasn't so sure on. But the, the gist of the issue, I think, is that when we appoint members to the boards and the commissions, I mean, my thought is that we want you to be loyal to the people of Guam and, and doing what's, what's best for them and not necessarily what's best for whoever, any governor's political agenda. And so I noticed in your open, when the Chair asked you where you wanted to build the hospital, that was quite a departure from the governor's, well, just her whole plan to build it in Manilau. And, you know, I'm just worried you're going to get a phone call. So, yeah, when they press you on that, what would your response be?
In my heart, I believe the hospital needs to be in the same general area that it is for the betterment of the people. I don't know, that's kind of far away out there in Manilau. I, I have to be honest.
Thank you. Thank you for your honesty and I look forward to supporting your confirmation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Blankenship, thank you for stepping up to the plate and answering the governor's call to be a part of the Board of Trustees of the Guam Memorial Hospital. And, you know, I know you, you've seen the hospital from looking, from the outside looking in and now that you're inside looking out. What is your assessment of the hospital or, do you believe the hospital is undersized, rightly sized or oversized in, in personnel?
Personnel? From my personal experiences with taking family there, I think we were adequately taken care of by nursing staff. Whenever I call and I have questions to the doctors, I can get on the phone with them rather easily. So I think there's adequate staffing in the ER. But I think I need more inside view to make the proper judgment.
As to where the hospital is?
Yes.
Overstaffed or understaffed, right? I see. And, and how long have you already been on the inside looking around and seeing what the, the operations is like? And have you just been, have you sat in a couple of meetings? Have you?
No.
Taken a tour? Have you?
The only experience that I have with Guam Memorial Hospital is every time I took my mother-in-law there for treatment. And I was happy with that treatment.
That's good to hear. And, you know, I hope that once you get onto the board and you got a very busy schedule and, and, you know, making the meetings and ensuring that you, you make your, your heart known, right? And I like your candor and being honest where what, what you see looking in and now that you're in, what other assessments you'd be able to kind of like, you know, address, right? And I hope that, you know, you, you stay vocal and make it known that if something is not right, that it has to be addressed. Thank you. Ma'am, is, does her position now fill the entire board or are you still lacking members for the board?
We are still lacking. Krista represents the Allied Health Community, which, you know, one member per the mandate, enabling legislation in the bylaws. But we still need, given that trustee Obispo ends her six-year term this month. And so she is not going to renew or be reappointed. So we're going to need to replace her with a public member.
And then, but you don't have issues making quorum?
No, no, we don't. We have, the, the quorum is five. And so we've been very fortunate that the members, the existing trustees have been very active and engaged and, you know, coming to the meetings. So no issue with the quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Those are the only questions I have for Dr. Blankenship. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And thank you, Krista, again for accepting this nomination. As I've told Lillian and other board members that, you know, if there's anything you need, want to discuss, my door is always open and Lillian has my, my number because there are a lot of serious issues involving healthcare on Guam. So we're going to try and get your nomination placed on the session agenda for May. Thank you again.
Madam Chair, if I may just take the opportunity real quick. I know this is a hearing on confirming Krista. But the issue with regards to above-step, I just want to clarify that that is a tool that is legal, that we can use to recruit non-clinical. And the non-clinical people that we recruit are like accountants because it's difficult to get accountants at a step of one, pay step of one. And other IT people that we recruit at above-step. And this is again, our tool, a way of recruiting talented individuals who have the credentials, as Krista mentioned, the experience, the education, the knowledge, the skill set. I mean, we want to try and minimize the brain drain. This is how we can attract our people to come and work, especially in a hospital setting. And so, yes, we use that tool, but we don't abuse it. I don't abuse it, but when I recognize an individual such as the Personnel Services Administrator who's highly credentialed, has a master's degree, has ethics background, that is someone we really, really benefit from in our hospital organization. But again, I, I just use that tool to recruit our talented individuals into our, with the creative, critical thinking skills, strategic thinking skills. That is why we use the above-step recruitment process. Thank you.
Thank you, Lillian. And again, thank you, Krista. The confirmation hearing for her nomination has now been concluded and we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you. We are now moving on to the public hearing on Bill 8938 COR, introduced by Senator Sabina Flores Perez. At this time, I ask all individuals signed to speak on this legislation to sit at the table. Before we accept public testimony, we will allow the bill's author opening statements.
Thank you so much, Chairperson Sabina Solis Matanani, for this opportunity to present testimony. So Bill 89-38, or the Inafa Malik Food Donation Act, aims to promote food security by increasing food donations on Guam. The United States Environmental Protection Agency estimated that in 2019, food retail, food service, residential sectors generated about 66 million tons of wasted food in the United States. And in 2022, 12.8% of U.S. households, or 44.2 people, were food insecure at some time during the year. US EPA considers donating wholesome and edible food as one of the top methods to reduce food waste nationwide. On Guam, according to the 2020 Jacobs, Inc. Food Waste and Recovery Study, an estimated 20,000 tons of food waste derived from groceries, restaurants, hotels are land, were landfilled in a year. The study noted that if the food were beat diverted or recovered, the amount could feed approximately 12% of Guam's population, or 20,000 people. Bill 89-38 promotes food donation by formally adopting or codifying the Federal Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Food Donation Act into Guam law. The Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Food Act was passed by the U.S. Congress in 1996 to promote food donations to the needy and to protect food donors from civil and criminal liabilities. And since then, all 50 states have benefited from this and Hawaii and California have codified and adapted this act to better suit their respective communities. Bill 8938 specifically proposes to limit liability to those who donate food in good faith of apparently wholesome food and apparently fit grocery products for the following: persons and gleaners to nonprofit organizations, nonprofit organizations to their clients, and qualified direct donors to their individuals in need. And qualified direct donors include agricultural producers, processors, distributors. It also includes wholesalers, retail grocers, restaurateurs, caterers, school food authorities or institutions of higher education. In this context, apparently wholesome food and apparently fit grocery products refers to items that properly follow federal and local regulations such as the Guam Food Code. But that may not be readily marketable due to the appearance, quality, size, surplus or other conditions. So a product may not be attractive, but it's perfectly healthy to eat. Furthermore, the bill states that nothing in this section shall be construed to supersede local health regulations in order to ensure compliance with the Guam Food Code. Currently, the Salvation Army receives food donations by the Hyatt in accordance with the Guam Food Code, where they implement food safety training for those handling the food, ensuring health standards are met during transportation through labeling, temperature controls and keeping logs of their donations. Bill 8938 is a win all around for our community, local businesses and the environment because it presents an opportunity for increased donations to our local food pantries and nonprofits with the hope that they can service our community year-round because they have a sufficient or surplus amount of food. Businesses can utilize tax deductions when donating to nonprofit organizations and it reduces the production of methane gas, which is the second-largest greenhouse gas that contributes to climate change, which we as Pacific Islanders are at the front lines. I would like to thank my cosponsors, Vice Speaker Tonyada, Senators Chris Barnett, Shelley Calvo and Therese Trelawney for their support. And I look forward to the public testimony and the support of my colleagues. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Perez. We will begin with public testimony, starting to my left. If you could please state your name, speak closely into the microphone and what organization you are representing.
Sure, my name is Urban Sleg. I'm the General Manager for the Guam Solid Waste Authority. And I've been in this position since October of 2021. I'm here to bring my support to Bill 8938, which proposes to clarify the protections from liability for food donations. from liability for food donations. From the first couple of months that I came to Guam, I was interviewed by Jacobs Engineering, who was at the time putting together the solid waste plan for the island. And they kind of asked me, you know, what kind of advice would you give if you wanted to start a food waste composting program? And I told them, well, first, what I would do is to make sure that the food that's in the grocers or the restaurants or the hotels would feed people first, and then look at other ways to compost it and do it. Try to feed the people first instead of, you know, putting together a program that makes dirt. I think that's more important. And when you think about it, the people that produce the food, from the farmers to the people that transported it, to the grocers who had to, you know, stock it, sell it, to the restaurateurs who prepared the food, they all do that because they want people to eat it, to use it. And so this would fulfill their, that long chain of people that are producing that food, fulfill their expectations. I offer under 40A105, under donations, a couple of suggestions. One is, I lived in Florida and worked for Waste Management, so I do know that in the Orlando area, as other places in the U.S., they have a robust system for transporting food from groceries or restaurants or hotels to homeless shelters, to people that could use it. I suggest just, instead of recreating the wheel, look at those regulations and, in terms of time, temperature, et cetera, mirror those because they work. And the other thing that I found was corporate policy is prevalent in the community to only look at caterers or other places, restaurants, that support the reuse of the food. So anyways, I think you have corporations here on the island that could support that as well. And that basically concludes my testimony. Open for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slick. Michelle.
Hoffiday. My name is Michelle Christostamo, and I am the President and Co-Founder for Guahan Sustainable Culture. And I am here to give my strong support for Bill 8938, representing GSC, but also as a farmer and a community member who has been very active, you know, giving out food to families in need, working with our farmers, especially during COVID, to purchase surplus foods that might have otherwise gone to waste. And we've seen a lot of the firsthand challenges of food insecurity and food waste here on Guam. And beyond addressing hunger, the bill aligns perfectly with sound environmental practices, especially when we're talking about the methane gas and its contribution to climate change. And our organization has been actively promoting a composting program here on Guam as a method to divert food waste, but we firmly believe in the food recovery hierarchy, where feeding hungry people is the highest and best use of surplus food. And then only after exploring all of those options should we consider composting or other forms of disposal. Many businesses on Guam are hesitant to donate their surplus food due to perceived liability concerns. We have conducted surveys in the past, and we have heard firsthand from restaurants, which revealed that hardly any of the businesses we surveyed were donating their surplus food to feed the hungry. Instead, that perfectly edible food was ending up in the landfill. And the irony is that while businesses fear liability from donation, the greater liability that we face as an island is the environmental, social, and economic cost of our overflowing landfill and growing food insecurity. The methane emissions, lost nutritional value, and wasted resources represent a far greater collective liability than the minimal risk of good-faith food donation. Since 2020, GSC has helped redirect over 50,000 pounds of local surplus produce, which I mentioned, much of that had been during the COVID pandemic. And we've partnered with local farms, food businesses, and the Guam Department of Agriculture to connect this nutritious food with families who needed it. There are companies we have looked at, including Goodr, which is G-O-O-D-R in the U.S., that have demonstrated how technology and legal protection can transform food recovery efforts. They use a food waste management platform to connect businesses with surplus food to nonprofit organizations. And so they have created an efficient recovery system while providing businesses with tax benefits and detailed analytics on their contributions to community welfare and environmental sustainability. So with this bill's passage, I believe that similar innovative logistic solutions could flourish on our island, creating a more equitable and sustainable food system for all of our residents. Bill 8938 addresses multiple critical issues facing our island: food insecurity, environmental sustainability, and economic efficiency. By clarifying liability protections for food donors and creating a framework for increased food recovery, this legislation will help ensure that good food reaches those who need it most rather than contributing to our landfill problem. I urge the committee to support the passage of the Inafamaalik Food Donation Act. This legislation embodies our cultural value of Inafamaalik, making things right for each other by creating pathways for our community to share abundance and reduce waste. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on this important legislation. Sizou Smasi.
Thank you, Ms. Christostamo. Mrs. Ariola.
Thank you, Chairperson Sabrina Salas-Matunani, members of the 38th Guam Legislature. My name is Teresa Ariola, the Director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 8938 that was introduced by Senator Sabina Perez. The Department of Public Health and Social Services is in support of Bill 8939, which encourages food donation and clarifies liability protections for donors. This bill is a positive step towards reducing food insecurity, addressing environmental waste, and supporting business and local nonprofits. As the State Agency for the Emergency Food Assistance Program, TFAP, this program distributes, the program that distributes food commodities to over 12,000 households. This includes providing items for local food pantries at the Salvation Army and the Catholic Social Services and St. Dominic's. There are individuals who come into the Division of Homelessness Assistance and Poverty Prevention Office requesting food commodities for survival. Food insecurity is a growing concern, given the climate and decrease in some of the social support programs. Individuals struggle to afford nutritious meals, leading to core mobility, bad health habits, and outcomes, and social stigmas. Meanwhile, thousands of pounds of edible food are wasted daily in our hotels, restaurants, and convenience stores, where they could be redirected to feed those most in need. Donating this food to community organizations, such as churches, or even maybe the village mayors, provide a resource for families struggling to make ends meet on Guam. By facilitating these donations, we can reduce food waste while simultaneously enhancing the availability of nutritious meals and sustenance to many of Guam's households. The environmental impact of food waste is stated in the bill proposal. 20,000 tons of food waste per year on Guam and potentially feeding around 12% of Guam's population, or 20,000 people, speaks for itself. By enabling the donation of the apparently fit grocery product, we can significantly reduce the amount of food that ends up in our landfill. This effort supports environmental sustainability and aligns with the broader goals of reducing waste and conserving our limited land. Nonprofit organizations are often strained with budget constraints and limited resources to meet the demand for their services. Donations from local restaurants will be a vital lifeline for groups like the Ministry of the Homeless, who rely on daily community sponsors to sustain their feeding. For the Sisters of Mercy in Agatia, who feed the homeless with sometimes their own money, this would help. For those in shelter, these organizations can be spared from using their scarce funds towards purchasing food if needed. Furthermore, by facilitating collaboration between food producers and nonprofits, this initiative can foster stronger ties within communities, empowering individuals and businesses to become active participants in the fight against hunger. Our local restaurants are deeply embedded in the community and can play a significant role in reducing food insecurity through these donations. Many restaurant owners and managers do realize the food waste and potential good it can do, but face logistical or regulatory barriers when it comes to donating food. Providing a means and liability protection can help mitigate these concerns, encouraging more businesses to not only participate, but create stronger food donation programs. Additionally, this initiative can be a win-win for restaurant owners. Donating surplus food can reduce disposal costs, create a positive public profile, and demonstrate a commitment to Inafamaalik and attract customers who value their ethics and business culture. This legislation can inspire a broader cultural shift towards Inafamaalik. It might encourage other sectors, such as supermarkets, caterers, food trucks, and farmers, to consider joining a movement that raises the health tide of our people. As long as there are protective processes in place for consumers and incentives for providers, ongoing partnerships between food businesses, nonprofits, community stakeholders can combat hunger in our most vulnerable. This legislation also aligns with FDA's 2022 Model Food Code, which this department's Division of Environmental Health is seeking to adopt in collaboration with the Guam Food Safety Advisory Group. The 2022 code seems, deems food donations acceptable as long as food safety practices are followed. Our current food safety regulation on Guam, known as the Guam Food Code, is based on the 2005 Model Food Code. While the food code, while Guam Food Code does not explicitly prohibit food donation, some island food establishments may be hesitant to do so nonetheless. Thus, the enactment of Bill 8939 may reduce barriers to food donations. As also, the financial impact of Bill 89 to the department is minimal. Any required outreach or regulatory development can be incorporated into ongoing efforts related to the adoption of the 2022 Model Food Code by DEH. In conclusion, as the Leon Garotanora Administration is championing the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, or SDGs, the donation of edible food waste is a highly effective way to combat food insecurity, reduce environmental waste, and support our local community. As we are limited in our resources due to our location, we should take all measures that utilize what we have in a responsible and beneficial way for our community. By implementing the language in Bill 8938, we can address 11 of the 17 SDGs for our island today and into the future. Department of Public Health and Social Services appreciates the opportunity to testify on Bill 89. We ask that the legislature take into consideration the department's recommendation and comments. Thank you very much, Sizou Smasi, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Ariola. We will now begin questions, starting with the bill's author, Senator Perez.
Thank you, Chairperson Matunani. So I do appreciate all of your testimony and support of the bill. Definitely, it means a lot to me. As well as to West Care, I believe West Care also provided testimony, written testimony and support. Sizou Smasi. I understand that the Model Food Code is going to be, you're working on it to be adopted, and it's aligned with this bill. So I'm looking forward to that and providing input if necessary. So thank you for that. I know in the bill, it states that the rules and regs are to be developed, and so it aligns with that process. Do you know the timeline, perhaps, of, you know, the Model Food Code, the 2022 adoption?
I'll ask Chief of DEH, Tom Nodot, he has the details on that.
Thank you, Senator, for the question. My name is Tom Nodot. I'm the Chief Environmental Public Health Officer with the Division of Environmental Health. So we have what's formally called Guam Food Safety Task Force. Now it's named Guam Food Safety Advisory Group. And they were the group that assisted us in reviewing, modifying, and eventually adopting the Guam Food Code, which is based on 2005 Food Code. In fact, we had a discussion the last two meetings, which we meet quarterly, of wanting to update it to reflect the current model, which is 2002. Now, as you know, the AL process can be timely. There are many steps along the way. I can't give a timeline, Senator, but I will say this, it'll be much shorter than it was when we adopted 2005, which took 10 years due to several delays and obstacles. But we believe you can do it. Be optimistic, ma'am. Earliest, one year. At worst, maybe more than a year, but be optimistic, maybe within a year.
Okay, that's good to hear that. Yeah, I do appreciate all the work. I understand I was part of that group, and there's been a lot of, a huge improvement or progress being made. So thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you, Senator.
Chief. So the other thing that I've noticed, I do appreciate the suggestions by Michelle. So thank you for, so Goodr has a, it looks like some app or some sort of technology where it can really kind of pinpoint to make sure that all of these regulations are being followed. So is that accurate?
Yes, and I was able to actually listen to the founder early in February this year give a presentation at a composting workshop in February. She was explaining the app and how they really are like the middle person. They handle all the logistics, and they are able to also take on the liability. So there's something that they do to help take on the liability and put the restaurants and food businesses at ease when they are donating their food. So it's a good model to look at, and I'll be happy to share more with you.
That'd be great to also include that into the discussion for the Model Food Code as well. So thank you for that suggestion. And General Manager Slick, I do appreciate also your input in regards to how to make it more robust. So looking at these jurisdictions, like in Florida, where they actually have really kind of made, I guess, an infrastructure for food donation that's reliable. So I think that's really important. And you also worked in Florida, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I worked for Waste Management, and I said, as I said, they had a corporate policy to use caterers that would donate the food after an event. And what would happen was, there would be, the corporate would provide a list of participating caterers. You would select them. Caterer would want to know where the location was that the food was to be delivered to, approximately how many people. So they would tailor it to make sure that there wasn't too excessive amount of food. The caterer would also be required under time to note how long the food was out, what temperature it was. And then, much to the chagrin of some of the participants, they would close up the buffet line because the next step would be to go to the location. And the caterer would actually not only determine where the location to serve it was, but also where it was to be delivered to at the end of the event, and the time it took to get there, so that everything would fall in line with Florida Department of Health regulations.
Okay, thank you for that. And also, we did, I did reach out to Department of Revenue and Taxation to kind of bring information in regards to the tax deductions and benefits for businesses too in that regard. So thank you so much. I appreciate your time and effort in providing testimony today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Kumitata.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for being with us, panel. Madam Chair, according to information that was published on December 10th, 2024 by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, in 2019, there were 9.9 million domestically-acquired foodborne illnesses that the CDC estimates were caused by six pathogens. According to another report from the U.S. Public Interest Research Group Education Fund, a total of 1,392 Americans in 2024 became ill after consuming a contaminated food item. This is up from 1,118 in 2023. The number of hospitalizations more than doubled, rising from 230 to 487, and deaths climbed from eight to 19. Nearly all, 98% of the people that became ill from food that was recalled in 13 outbreaks with confirmed illnesses, all but one which it involved either leucemia, salmonella, or E. coli. Madam Chair, the proposed Section 40A, 106 Construction, on Page 7, Lines 10 and 12, states that "The section shall not be construed to create any liability that none of the proposed policies shall be construed to supersede local health guidelines." This is probably a question for public health, but recognizing that Guam law, specifically 10GCA Section 22101, requires every person, including but not limited to handlers of food or drink in any eating and drinking establishment or at any food service establishment to obtain a health certificate every year, please confirm whether that these same requirements would apply to those who would be distributing food to persons in need, either maybe through soup kitchens, or maybe even the annual Thanksgiving giveaways that we see at the Chamorral Village. Oh yes, thanks, Tom.
Maybe I can best answer that, Senator. First, we regulate those businesses that are just that businesses. There's commerce involved, exchange of money, goods, other, even promotion, promoting their business or their product. So if it's a donation, there's no commerce involved, then we do not get involved. We have no authority to regulate that. So in other words, if a hotel or restaurant donates food to a nonprofit, that is not a commerce in terms of exchange of goods, so we would not have oversight over that. But with that said, of course, the establishment that's handling the food, that's private food, they expect that they have the employees' health certificate, and the business, in this case, abide by the governing regulations, such as the Guam Food Code. Does that answer the question, Senator?
Yes, it does. Yeah, thank you, Tom, for that. And maybe you want to stay for, stay for a second. This is, I just want to make sure I get this for the record. What data is available summarizing the number of reported foodborne illnesses in Guam, maybe for at least the last three calendar years? And what portion of GCA of these reports were attributed to food that were prepared outside of a DPHSS authorized facility or persons not authorized by public health to handle food or drinks?
Okay. So the information regarding foodborne illness on Guam are reported and collected by our epidemiologists with the Division of Public Health. But what I do know, speaking with them as well, and the fact that we oversee food facilities, is that there's, in the last decade, there may be only one documented, documented case of foodborne illness outbreak. So in terms of data showing the foodborne illness outbreaks on Guam, it's quite low compared to the maybe other jurisdictions. Of course, there's, we're not saying, the public health is not saying anyway that there's no foodborne illness occurring on Guam, but in terms of actual outbreak, meaning there are two or more individuals gotten sick from the same source, that's actually documented and reported to us, has been very, very low in the last decade. In fact, we're pretty proud of that number, and we think that has to do with stringent regulations and laws that's in place of food safety, and that require all employees who work at a food facility to have health certificate, and every food facility have a manager who's trained in food safety. So we think there's a lot of contributing factors to that. And frankly, maybe a little bit of luck also maybe play a role in that, but Guam, in terms of numbers, it's pretty, it's quite low in terms of reported foodborne illness outbreaks on Guam, yeah.
All right, thank you, Tom, and thank you, public health, for all that you do for the people of Guam, and thank you, Madam Chair, for the time. Appreciate it.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Really don't have any questions for the panel. I just want to say thank you for being here, and I really, I'm looking forward to seeing this bill go into the agenda, as I too support the efforts. Sina Massey.
Thank you, Senator Barnett.
Sizou Smasi, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to the panel for the very insightful testimony. It just reminds me of a few things. You know, my first job was working at Popeyes, when it was over at Gibson's, not the one on the base. And every night, I worked the night shift. The employees would split all the food that was left over at the end of the night, and so sometimes, some people may have fried a little extra chicken before closing. But I went to a fast food restaurant recently, and I kind of asked one of the ladies at the window, hey, you know, you work the night shift, so when you guys close, what do you do with the food? And she's, I said, do you get to take some home? And she goes, yeah, but already we're tired of it, so usually we just throw it away. Which, you know, I'm very grateful that this bill will, will address that. And then, you know, I have an uncle who farms, and before the pandemic, we'd always meet him over at my, one of my friend's houses, because he would go around to all of the school cafeterias, and even, you know, the cost you less, pay less, and he would pick up expired produce from the cafeterias. They would get all the meal slop, but they would also, a lot of times, get chocolate milk, skim milk, and a lot of this stuff was, you know, still good surplus. Some of it was just expired, you know. But all of this, this produce and stuff, he would use to feed the pig. You know, and a lot of it, when we'd be chucking it over the fence to the pigpen, you would see, you know, green grapes, broccoli, tomatoes, and some of it was, you know, moldy, but a lot of it was, was still good. And, you know, the pigs got to eat, but times are tough nowadays, and so I commend Senator Perez for this great bill, which has, you know, managed to get the support of some really integral people. So I support the legislation very much, and I just think that our people are definitely in a, in a time of need now, in any way that we can assist them with any type of food donation. And I also appreciate that this covers hot food, so to speak, you know, buffets, as well as what you're going to get from the grocery stores, and maybe even some of the GDE cafeterias. So I know in the Bill 40A105 mandates the Department of Public Health and Social Services to promote the recovery of food fit for human consumption through methods such as, but not limited to outreach, online educational campaigns, newsletters, bulletins. And so my question, Director Ariola, and I assume the answer is yes, you guys are prepared to do that with your marketing people?
Well, of course, the Department, the Division of Homelessness and Poverty Prevention is probably going to take, I see, taking the lead. I mean, because they are really interacting with the most vulnerable inner community that need the feeding. And we're collaborating and partnering with the soup kitchens and the nonprofit organizations that, you know, like Catholic Social Services, Salvation Army, so absolutely, we're ready to do that. It's, it's, the nice thing about the law, or the bill, is that there's some protection. And so if there's any hesitation from anyone, whether it's a business, or a restaurant, or whatever business that is, that is handling food, there's some protection for them. And just when you were talking about getting all the, you know, with your uncle and, and the, pigs ate well, right? And yet, maybe it was just expired one day.
That's the first time I tried a golden kiwi, actually.
How many, how many expired stuff are in our fridge? And it's, you know, so, anyway, we're very supportive of this.
I don't know who can ask this, but just like based now, we don't have this law, right? So what, what is, how would you rate the generosity level of those entities that, that can give, even with the liability in place?
I, I don't have the exact data, but I can tell you that, for example, the Carradoc Kitchen, you know, they rely on families or businesses who are willing to take that risk, right? Take that risk, because it's coming from a generosity part of their heart, and they're not too worried about the risk. And so I'm not sure what the data is, but I think if we pass this kind of legislation, we bring comfort to those who do have some hesitation, so.
So you're definitely anticipating an increase?
Absolutely, I would think so. You know, it's a great way, I, I really believe that restaurants and shopping center, I mean, grocers want to do what's right, but they're also worried about the liability. So a lot of people I know would love to, but, you know, they're too scared that they're, they're not protected. And so I don't know how I would be able to do it, like chuck so much good food in the trash, knowing that there's around the corner somebody hungry. So you chuck the food, and then you go buy them a dinner.
Right, yeah.
It's so, yeah, I mean, again, this brings some comfort to those who do have some hesitation, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Anything else, anyone would like that? No? All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. I'd just like to thank all of you for coming down and giving your testimony, and perhaps strengthening this bill, so that we'd be able to put this onto the next session agenda, and, you know, we'd be able to go out there, and these companies and these businesses, or even individuals will be more willing to provide nutrition for, for the less fortunate. And I think it's, it's bills like this that makes a difference in, in our everyday lives, and hopefully that we'd be able to make a change, right? I mean, we see it in, when we, when we go to, to the U.S., and, you know, you see people going through the trash cans or the dumpsters, and there's no need for that when we can put legislation like this forward and be able to have them fed instead of going through the, the trash. So thank you all for your testimony. Senator Perez, thank you for introducing this piece of legislation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. I just had one question for public health. Do you foresee any additional staffing, funding, technical assistance to implement this bill if it becomes law? And if so, do you have a rough estimate?
I don't at this time, but if I do, I know who to come to. But that's something I need to think about. If anything, it's more of getting the word out, when, when, if and when, and I think it's more when, the bill becomes law, you know, getting, getting the word out to those establishments that may not be already donating their food, or their, or their cooked or, or good food, to ensure that they're aware. And, you know, off the top of my head, that's easy. Let's, I would probably partner with a letter with all businesses that have a license that, you know, and get that letter out, right? I mean, that's a start, just thinking off the top of my head, which, you know, it's a letter, and it's just partnering with my, with my colleague at Rev and Tax. So, you know, we can do many things to just get the word out, other than just, you know, social media or things like that. But if you want to talk about direct business and getting them to really know that this law is passed, and, you know, you could take advantage of it, and, you know, I would partner with Rev and Tax off the bat.
Thank you, Mrs. Ariola, Ms. Crisostomo, and Mr. Slick for providing testimony on Bill 89. Senator Perez, your closing comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just want to also reiterate that the regulations are going to be there to support this bill, you know, hopefully with, if it passes, right? So it would be there to support, to ensure the safety of the food that is being donated. So I think that's a cause for comfort for those that are going to take part in this program. So again, Bill 8938, or the Inafamalik Food Donation Act, aims to promote food security by increasing food donations on Guam. You know, we could feed 20,000 people with the food that we are throwing away, which is, you know, it's a, it's unfortunate that we are doing this. And by adapting the Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Food Donation Act, we can help address this food insecurity on Guam by limiting liability for those that are donating food. Bill 8938, we, through the bill, we can accomplish various goals, such as providing food security to people in need, assisting our food pantries and nonprofits, and supporting businesses, curbing methane gas emissions, and fostering an even greater culture of generosity that has the power to uplift our community and island. Again, I thank you so much for your testimony and support. Sizou Smasi.
Thank you, Senator Perez, and thank you to the panel for testifying on this important piece of legislation. We are going to move on to the next bill on the agenda, but we're going to take a two-minute recess and be back after that. Thank you.[1538.53] The Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs is now called back to order. The time is 3:32 in the afternoon. We now continue with the public hearing on Bill 9538 COR, introduced by Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. At this time, I ask those who have signed up to provide testimony to please take a seat at the table. Senator Barnes, you are now recognized to present your bill.
Wondunkulunasidus Maasi, Madam Chair, for giving me the opportunity to open on Bill 95-38 COR. And I also want to give thanks, special thanks to Lonnie Tamandong and Tiffany Angoko for bringing this to my attention and for their support and their advocacy and their commitment to providing quality care to our children and seniors. Madam Chair, Bill Number 95-38 is a reflection of what I think are universal priorities for us in the Guam Legislature. It supports small businesses and working families. It promotes our Chomoro and Island values for raising our kids and respecting our elders. And it streamlines regulations so this idea can become a reality quicker without ignoring valid health and safety concerns. Specifically, this bill updates licensing laws for childcare facilities by including a new type of intergenerational daycare centers. Madam Chair and colleagues, Guam is not the first place in the nation to consider this concept. In fact, a 2023 study published by the National Institute of Health focused on the benefits and challenges of expanding intergenerational daycares in Austin, Texas. The study concludes that this model has individual organizational and societal benefits. The researchers of this study interviewed seniors participating in Austin, Texas's first intergenerational daycares, and they touted the benefits of sharing knowledge with the children enrolled, whether it be creative skills in art class or family recipes and cooking tips. The children interviewed said they enjoyed intergenerational activities outdoors where they planted vegetables and fruits with seniors and then used that produce later in the year to make salads together. But just like other jurisdictions, Madam Chair, Bill Number 9538 recognizes that safety measures must be in place to protect both the young and older people enrolled. Population groups we know to be at risk of disease and abuse. So this measure gives the Department of Public Health and Social Services 60 days to draft rules and regulations to implement this new license, but sets minimum standards, I believe, will offer peace of mind to the families of both children and seniors going to these daycares. Madam Chair, this includes certified staff in both elder care and childcare, age-appropriate, separate and shared spaces, evidence-based educational and care programming, emergency health and nutritional care protocols, prohibition of sex offenders from employment or entry, and admission interviews for adult participants and their families. That's basically what we are trying to accomplish with this Bill 95, Madam Chair. And I know that there has been a lot of testimony submitted ahead of today's hearing, so I won't go on much longer. But I do want to say this before we hear from our stakeholders. If there's a way to make this bill safer for our kids and seniors, I literally am open to making amendments that will address concerns. If there's a way to make this bill more workable for our regulators, I want to hear how to support our government partners. And if there's a way to make this bill better for our small businesses, please let this committee know. This, Madam Chair, is in the spirit of community. I want Bill 95 to reflect, Madam Chair, and I thank you for the time to share why this measure should be passed by this body. So Wondunkulunasidus Maasi for giving me the opportunity to open, and I'm so excited to hear that there are so a lot of folks here here to testify on this measure. Sina Maasi.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. We will now open the floor to public testimony, and we'll start to my left.
Hafadee, Madam Chair, and members of the 38th Legislator of Guam, thank you for having us here today. My name is Dina Rendin Pangolinan, and I am the President with the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce. I'm here representing the GWCC, but also myself as a mother and daughter and community member here in Guam. We are here respectfully submitting a testimony in favor of Bill 9538 relative to allowing childcare facilities to operate as intergenerational daycare centers. GWCC is an organization whose mission includes advocacy, promotion, and expansion of women-owned businesses here on our island Guam. A majority of the current daycare centers on island are women-owned, and a majority of the employees hired at these centers do the vital work of caring for our precious little ones and elders are female. GWCC finds Bill 9538 to be an innovative way to address the challenge of families needing qualified childcare as well as those searching to find care for the Manamku. The benefits of regular interactions between young children and elderly people are widely accepted. The concept of intergenerational daycare is not new. In fact, it was in Japan in 1976 that someone first merged a nursery and a care home on a single site. And by 2019, Tokyo, for example, had 16 intergenerational facilities established. This practice has now spread to the United States, Australia, and Canada. Some of the states immediately that do have some examples, California, Washington, Illinois, Ohio, and Minnesota. The number of new projects being developed in this field is truly inspiring. If managed properly, intergenerational daycare centers promise many societal and economic benefits. The GWCC fully supports this concept. We do realize that specific policies will need to be developed with the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services for this new type of care facility for our island. Experts note that in order for intergenerational daycare settings to be beneficial to both young children and their elderly counterparts, the programs need to meet several criteria, particularly appropriate planning that takes into account individual needs and skills, and adequate staff training. We do recognize that policies will need to be developed with specific outcomes for both early childhood learning and geriatric care. But we want to acknowledge that such policies are already in place in several areas in the United States and in other countries. Guam can incorporate what we can and what we would like from these policies, as well as insert our own cultural components, our values of Anafamalik, respect for our Manamku, and the rich history of caring for one another here in Chomoro and Guahan. Such policies can strengthen intergenerational daycare business plans and provide much-needed evidence for federal funding applications that may arise in the future as well. GWCC truly encourages the adoption of these policies and parameters to govern this new type of facility, but we do also caution the government of Guam against overregulation that can prevent this new intergenerational care concept from truly flourishing on our island and in our community. Seduas Maasi, in conclusion, with to Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes for bringing this to the bill, to the table, and Seduas Maasi to all the members of the legislature for allowing us to testify in favor of Bill 9538. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pangolinan. Tiffany?
Hafadee, Madam Chair, Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Tina Munya Barnes, and Senator Gumatata. My name, I am here today to provide my testimony in support of Bill Number 9538. My name is Tiffany Angoko, and I am the Training Center Manager at the Guam Early Childhood and Caregivers Academy in Shoregeka, Guam's newest early childhood professional development training and resource center. I am not a childcare provider, meaning I don't directly provide care to infants or toddlers at the Giving Tree Intergenerational Daycare. However, my role at Gecca is affiliated with the intergenerational daycare as I alternate between the training center and the intergenerational daycare to observe, provide training, and engage in curriculum planning based on interactions with teachers, children, and elders. Research has shown that intergenerational daycare settings benefit both children and older adults. Benefits for children include enhanced social skills and behavior, improved language and literacy skills, increased confidence and self-esteem, the development of empathy and respect, greater patience, a sense of responsibility, learning opportunities such as new hobbies, and the formation of fun and meaningful connections. Benefits for older adults include reduced feelings of loneliness and isolation, improved mental health and emotional well-being, enhanced cognitive function, a renewed sense of purpose and contribution, and increased social engagement and interest in life. Overall, these benefits support working families and contribute to building a stronger, more inclusive community. On the days I'm at the daycare, I see children being dropped off on the daycare side while seniors are escorted by their adult children or relatives to the adult daycare side. There are moments when I envision the children and seniors crossing the lobby to visit each other for shared activities. However, what stands in the way of that interaction becoming a reality is a sealed wall, once a doorway with a sign reading "The Giving Tree Elder Care" hanging above a discolored patch where the door used to be. It's a shame that the adult care and daycare never operated as an intergenerational center. Now, the fate of the facility rests in the hands of legislative action to move the business forward. I am concerned by the thought that the absence of government regulations could prevent this model of care from benefiting the youngest and oldest generations in Guam. I personally see this not just as a, sorry, a concept or business model, but as a real solution for bridging the caregiving gap for these generations and for working families across the island. Intergenerational daycares and centers are not new. They exist in various countries around the world. However, awareness and acceptance of intergenerational care and providers are still growing. While this approach may be new to Guam, I do urge the committee and Department of Public Health and Social Services to view the challenges as opportunities, opportunities to thoughtfully address key components such as health and safety protocols, program design and structure, staffing and training, funding and regulations, and space and accessibility as part of establishing a regulatory framework. If this bill passes and clear supportive regulations are implemented, Guam stands to benefit greatly from the establishment of more intergenerational daycares. These centers offer more than just caregiving solutions. They create environments where learning, support, and companionship flourish, enriching the lives of our youngest and oldest community members as well as the caregivers and the staff who serve them. Thank you for your time, and I ask the committee and the legislative body to strongly support this bill.
Thank you, Mrs. Angoko. Mrs. Tamandong?
Hafadee, Madam Chair, and the Committee of Health and Veterans Affairs, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Vice Speaker Ada, and Senator Gumatata. Seduas Maasi for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Bill 95-38, which would allow childcares to operate as intergenerational daycare centers. My name is Melani Tamandong. I am a small business owner. I am the owner of the Giving Tree Preschool Centers and the Helping Hands Adult Daycare. We have four childcare locations with the newest one located in Baragada in the same building as our adult daycare center and the location of what we hope to be Guam's first intergenerational daycare. I support Senator Tina Munya Barnes' bill that will allow a new business, an intergenerational facility, to operate on island. Allowing Guam to open businesses that support our community and provide resources to our Manamku and their family is moving forward. On Guam, where respecting and caring for our elders was so ingrained in our upbringing, I am so sad to see that there is little programs that support a higher quality of life for our Manamku. And that people who come forward to create more programs are met with so much disapproval, turned away, met with opposition for something that is towards improving our parents and our grandparents' quality of life. It would only be 20, 30, 40 years till we're there. About 30 for me. The change, the innovation, the not being afraid of something new has to start now, boosting our Manamku's sense of purpose by providing them the opportunities to share their skills, their knowledge, their stories with our children. That is not bad for our community. That is not bad for our island. The meaningful connections that an intergenerational program will provide to both the children and the elders will stay long after the school day and work day is over. How many of us grew up with our grandparents, know who their relatives are because of them, sharing family history? How much of the knowledge do we take in from them and pass to our own children? There were many times that I sat as a young girl and listened to the stories of my grandmother, who's here in support of my bill, had told me about the World War II, her experiences that I want to make into a book so my family, future generations, can always know where they came from, their roots, their culture. Intergenerational daycares and intergenerational programs are culturally supportive. It will provide a platform for preserving and passing down cultural heritage, customs, and traditions here on Guam. There are significant benefits for our senior community, from something as simple as giving them a renewed sense of purpose and fulfillment to combating an epidemic of social isolation and loneliness, allowing our grandparents to contribute to our future up to the last years of their lives. Studies have shown that intergenerational programs promotes physical health, cognitive function, overall well-being for seniors or in seniors. If you Google it, you'll see all the benefits. We are facing challenges caring for our seniors here on Guam. We have mayor's office senior centers where they can show up, play bingo, socialize, go home. At the end of the day, we have three government-run adult daycares, one in N'arahan, one in Machachi, and then one in Wustig, which serves as a dementia care center. And then we have one nursing home, St. Dominic's, that is full with a waitlist, only has 60 beds. Only 35 can be occupied right now. And then there's Helping Hands Adult Daycare, which is the only private adult daycare center on Guam. In 2023, 17.6% of Guam's population were 60 years in order, approximately 30,000. In 2023, 17.6% of Guam's population were 60 years in order, approximately 30,000. There is nowhere enough facilities, enough care facilities to ensure that we are bridging the gaps. We need to start thinking about this. We need, we need to become innovative and open to programs that involve our seniors and provide real solutions to quality of life for our aging population. Only then will we have more businesses and collaborations to build more for the Manomko on our island. I'd like to see full assisted living communities on Guam one day, hopefully before I get to my senior years. This is how it happens, legislation that is supportive of this. On the children's side, still many benefits. Children develop empathy, patience, social skills. Interacting with seniors foster stronger language and communication abilities. It develops positive understanding of aging, and it increases confidence, self-of-belonging. The Department of Public Health and Social Services, we are required to be a part of the GPBD standards, and that is based off the NACI core standards. NACI supports intergenerational centers. In fact, they have several intergenerational centers across the nation. We currently, wait, so, we understand the community's concern, Department of Public Health's concern, health and safety. I run a high liability business. Health and safety is paramount. We currently have already strict health and safety policies in place at both the childcare and elder care facilities. We can address these. We can work with public health to ensure that the participants in the program are safe, healthy, and thriving. Staff will always be present and supervising and hands-on in any shared activity. They have their quarters in the facility and a shared grand friends area for when they do have shared activities together. Medical clearances, background checks, those are all already part of the existing programs. It can all be worked out. Children involved in these programs benefit from the nurturing presence of older adults. It brings a familial aspect to the preschool setting. I have personally in 2023 visited St. Francis Intergenerational Daycare in Ewa Beach, Hawaii. This is their second location that has been around, operating successfully for over 12 years. Their first location for more than 30 years. Fly seven hours away and they're there. Intergenerational daycares are not new. They are new to Guam. But please don't let that be the reason why we can't open a business that contributes so much back to the community. My main points are building connections with the young, and the young at heart on our island holds numerous benefits that will enhance our lives, enrich our community, and bridge generational gaps. It will preserve our culture and provide a sense of belonging for all involved. There are too many benefits that outweigh the concerns. The concerns that do exist are hurdles that we must get over with establishing policies and regulations, but they are not roadblocks. I thank you for the opportunity, and I urge the committee to please move forward and support this legislation that will give back to our Manomko, will give so much to our children, and will give so much back to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tamnong. Mrs. Ariola?
Good afternoon, everyone. Chairwoman Sabrina Salas-Montanani, Senators of the 38th Guam Legislature. I'm here to provide testimony on Bill 95-38 relative to allowing childcare facilities to operate as an intergenerational daycare center. This legislation introduced by Senator Tina Munya Barnes. For the record, the Department of Public Health and Social Services is in support of Bill 9538. However, because of our, because of the areas in which we oversee, there are some concerns that I agree we would need to work through, and I would think, I'm sure Senator Tina Munya Barnes is open to having all the stakeholders in the room and working those things out. However, allow me to, just for the record, identify those concerns that we will work through. Under the Division of Environmental Health, this department is responsible for enforcing Chapter 25 of Division 2, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, which sets minimum sanitation standards for institutions like childcare centers. This includes ensuring that individuals with communicable diseases are excluded from employment, establishing a procedure for reporting employees and clients with communicable diseases to the department, and ensuring these centers are maintained clean, safe, and free from environmental hazards. This department acknowledges the intent of Bill 95 and does not oppose it. However, we would like to share the following environmental health concerns that we hope will be addressed to further, through further amendments to Bill 95 to promote the health and safety of the occupants of the intergenerational daycare centers. Number one, sharing of spaces between children and elderly can lead to the spread of infections. As children are common carriers of viruses and bacteria which may be harmful to the elderly whose immune system are already weakened. Also, seniors often take medication that need to be carefully managed, and any accidental exposure could be dangerous for our children. So building around systems to make sure that those don't happen, we can work through. Two, noise levels in daycare centers where children playing could be disruptive to older adults, especially those with conditions like dementia or hearing loss. Three, the daycare environmental needs to be easily accessible to seniors as well as to children, which may complicate design or be costly to achieve. For example, for example, toilet facilities must allow pass-through of wheelchairs or walkers, and toilets and hand-washing sinks must be suitable height and size to be easily accessible to children. Combining spaces for children and elderly may also cause a bit of confusion for staff. Four, differences in mobility can pose risk. For instance, an elderly person using a walker might accidentally trip over a child's toy or movements. Five, ensuring there are enough trained staff to supervise both children and seniors at all times is crucial. Staff should be trained in both childcare and elderly care, and these are different but equally important. This ensures that they can address medical emergencies, behavioral challenges, and both physical and emotional needs. It's imperative that these measures to safeguard both the Manomko and the Manhobin are in place to ensure the safety and well-being of both age groups. With regards to the Division of Children's Wellness and the Division of Senior Citizens' input, both divisions agree that Manomko play a vital role in passing down language, history, and customs to our Manhobin. Though there may be some benefits from a structured intergenerational facility, further research should be conducted to determine the feasibility of implementing such facilities in Guam. The department has the following concerns. Merging childcare and adult care programs would involve meeting, meeting separate sets of regulations, which could be time-consuming for the intergenerational daycare to navigate through. The shared space, the shared use of a space for children and older adults might require hiring staff who are cross-trained to serve both groups effectively, or employ specialized teams to work with each population separately. This dual approach could lead to higher staff costs. Two, a facility serving both children and older adults must balance their different needs with enough space to ensure everyone's comfort and safety. Children need lively, engaging play areas, while older adults may require calmer spaces, accessible amenities, and accommodations for mobility aids. While fostering intergenerational interactions can be rewarding, designating space for independent activities are also necessary. Without proper supervision, interactions could lead to misunderstandings, accidents, or liable issues. Three, older adults with compromised immune systems face a heightened risk of contracting illnesses from children who are common carriers of colds and flu. Emergencies further complicate the situation, as evacuation plans must account for children needing swift supervision and elderly requiring slower, supported exit due to mobility challenges. In cases like a fire evacuation, prioritizing one group could inadvertently endanger the other, exposing the facility to significant liability and operational costs. Coordinating such plans require additional resources, training, and equipment to ensure safety for all. Four, operating an intergenerational daycare may be costly due to high staffing requirements, specialized equipment, and additional fees. Funding streams for childcare and adult care originate from different programs, such as CCDF for childcare. Using multiple funding sources demand extensive administrative effort, as each program, as does a distinctive eligibility require, has distinctive eligibility criterias. Facilities must maintain meticulous record-keeping and cost allocation to ensure funds like CCDF are used strictly for childcare. Failure to comply with these regulations could lead to audits, penalties, and increased administrative burdens. Co-mingling of Manomko and young children in Guam could require heavy background checks and monitoring of the Manomko for the safety of the children. Who will be responsible for conducting the comprehensive background checks of the Manomko exposed to children? For example, if the Manomko is a registered sex offender or child abuser that is in need of daycare, will they be denied enrollment into the intergenerational facility? The department recommends that the offenses relative to Chapter 25 of Title IX Guam Code Annotated, offenses relative to any form of violence, including domestic violence, child abuse, kidnapping, and offenses relative to drugs and weapons, be added to Page 4 of Line 6 through 11. No person convicted of any of these crimes should be admitted to a daycare facility. This section shouldn't be limited to sex crimes. It should be expanded to encompass the above offenses as mentioned. The co-mingling of facilities may also affect the curriculum and learning environment of children. Currently, Guam's childcare industry has been working in, to incorporate curriculums into their programs, and having intergenerational activities may be challenging. On the other hand, seniors with cognitive or physical limitations may feel overwhelmed by noisy, fast-paced environments. Balancing the privacy of both groups can be difficult in shared space. Intergenerational daycare has a potential to foster mutual benefits for both children and older adults by encouraging meaningful social interactions and enhancing cognitive and emotional well-being for both groups. However, despite these challenges, alternative models such as community-based intergenerational programs, or partnerships between schools and senior living centers, for example, children could visit senior centers to engage in storytelling or singing songs, should be considered as viable options to promote intergenerational connections without the complexities of a full-time daycare. As already authorized in our existing mandates, the Department of Public Health and Social Services may promulgate rules and regulations through the Administrative adjudication act. However, this department is concerned that the implementation timeline indicated in Section 4, Page 4, Lines 20 and 21 of the proposed bill, which requires the regulation to promulgate within 60 days. Developing and finalizing regulations is a complex process that involves multiple critical steps. Given our current resource challenges and many competing priorities, it's unlikely that the department will be able to promulgate well-crafted regulations within 60 days specified in the bill. For example, obtaining the review and approval from the Office of the Attorney General itself can take 60 days. Thus, we respectfully suggest revisiting the promulgation deadline to 180 days upon enactment in order to align with historical rule-making timeframes and our existing resources. In conclusion, intergenerational daycare should be guided by further study that includes the perspective of childcare and adult care staff, government agencies, and families. Clear policies, necessary funding, and continued collaboration from these stakeholders will be essential to ensure its success. We ask the legislature to take into consideration the department's recommendation and comments, and stand ready to further refine this bill. Thank you very much, and Sidhuus Maasi.
Thank you, Mrs. Ariola. Mrs. Flores?
Thank you, Senator. Hafeday Senator Salas-Montanani. Bill 9538 authored, Senator Munya Barnes, Senator Ada, and Senator Gumitautau. The Bureau of Women's Affairs respectfully submits testimony in favor of Bill 9538. While listening to a webinar on elderly abuse earlier this year, I learned a frightening statistic. In 10 years, for the first time in its history, the United States of America's older population is predicted to outnumber its younger population. While that is not the case on Guam, our 2020 census showed that the percentage of people here aged 62 and older about six years ago was only 14.3%, which in itself presents another health challenge. We still struggle with care for our young children and our Manomko, especially when so many families need two incomes to survive. Bill 9538 can address this challenge. BWA is in full support of the concept of intergenerational daycare centers. We've all seen the joy on the faces of residents at St. Dominique when children visit during the holidays. However, we note that it will fall on the Department of Public Health and Social Services, as Director Ariola has noted, to develop the specific policies to govern this new-for-Guam concept. Not only will daycare centers be asked to meet criteria with regard to early childhood education, but also these intergenerational centers will have to meet criteria to manage the challenges of geriatric clientele as well. Adequate staff training is imperative. GenerationsUnited.org contains an intergenerational program database that contains contact information about various programs in nearly every state. BWA suggests that gathering information from successful programs, as Director Tamnong has noted, to put together our own policies while incorporating Guam's cultural values will greatly contribute to the success of local intergenerational daycare centers. Our government needs to provide proper guidance and policies. Therefore, as Director Ariola noted, we do recommend that public health be given at least 180 days to develop these rules and regulations. BWA also recommends, as Director Ariola noted, that offenses relative to Chapter 25A of Guam Code Annotated Title IX be addressed. Intergenerational daycare centers are a wonderful solution to a very real challenge for our community. Let's guide the development of this concept so that it is successful for all involved: children, our Manomko, the daycare center owners, and our entire community. Sidhuus Maasi for the opportunity to testify in favor of this bill.
Thank you, Mrs. Flores. Senator Munya Barnes, you can start questioning.
Yes, thank you. And before I do the questioning, I'd like to also acknowledge, Madam Chair, note for the record that there are five more testimonies that have been submitted to the committee or to our office, and I just want to make sure that they're all appended into the committee report. We've got support from Jolene Ogunbaza, Jane Perez, we've got from M. Cepeda, and then A. Farren, and others, so hoping that they all get inserted into the committee. Thank you very much. So, first of all, I want to thank the panel members for being here, the government, the administration, to the Guam Chamber, Women's Chamber. Thank you for inviting us as a legislative body to be a part of your meeting and literally taking the time to hear concerns from our women leaders, right, our small business entrepreneurs, and just all those who literally want to help make a difference through business in our community. And I was very happy that I made it a point to be there and hearing the concerns. I wanted to make sure that, at least for my table, we had a table of 10, that the concerns were literally brought up. So, my first question will be, this afternoon, would be to you, Dina. Taking a look at the landscape of our childcare and elder care facilities, what barriers do entrepreneurs face when trying to establish a new care center?
Thank you, Senator. So I think as expressed down the line with the fellow ladies here, some of the obvious main barriers is that this business model does not exist here locally. So, you know, getting through the challenges and the hurdles, as Director Ariola stated, I don't think that they're impossible. I do think that they are possible to work through together. Some of the things that she mentioned, such such as separate restrooms, separate facilities, separate fire exits. I encourage members of the legislature to go take a look at Lonnie's space and Maloney's space and see the creativity that has come to life in that space. The majority of the concerns that were brought up that could be put into the bill as stipulations actually have been addressed there that I can visually see. So, we can see that it can be done. The additional concerns that were brought to light as far as possible offenders of different laws through the years, I think that that can definitely be accomplished through background checks with the application process and interview process. So, those are definitely some of the main hurdles, and of course, the main obvious being that it doesn't exist at this time. So, putting that into reality and assisting to help this business model exist in the community, and then just laying out the policies from there that everyone can follow, again, adding a new industry to the local community so that not only Maloney can benefit, but other entrepreneurs, whether they're women, female-owned or male-owned, can flourish and benefit from this opportunity in creating a new business and industry locally here that benefits us in so many different ways.
So, do you think that this bill will bring up the number of care centers on the island?
I do. I do think that it will bring interest. I think that other fellow women in our categories that may be having child, our children that we need to care for, but also our parents, as well as our grandparents. This now presents a new industry and a new business to take into perspective for entrepreneurship, where we could thrive as women caring for our children, our parents, our grandparents, and making income, as well as give back to the local economy. So, nothing but benefits, at least that we can see on our side. And I do want to acknowledge that I do have the Vice President of the Guam Women's Chamber here in support as well, our Executive Director, and many fellow board members here to support. So, thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate your answers. To Tiffany, you mentioned the educational and social benefits for kids and seniors that intergenerational daycare can provide. Can you share how these generations engaging in shared activities help children with language and empathy skills?
Sure, certainly. But, you know, let me also, first of all, I believe everyone here today do appreciate the intent of the bill and hearing from Director Ariola. I personally am glad it's not a direct opposition. I think we can hear that we are in support, but do acknowledge there are some barriers that we need to work through. As for benefits that I've mentioned, you know, based on, when I was doing some research and looking at the studies, and what I also personally have observed at the daycare when my time there, it's immediate. You know, I think from the physical presence, how the children and the seniors, they don't directly, you know, right now, they're not directly engaging with each other or interacting with each other. But, let me just go ahead and touch base on what my expertise lies in. Basic part of it is training and curriculum, right? And I know some of the concerns would be the curriculum design structure. One of the examples that may be something to consider is we're not talking about eight hours a day, Monday to Friday. They are in constant direct interaction with each other. It could be as simple as if the regulation stipulate, okay, maybe 30 minutes twice a week, something like that, right? Something to consider. And it could be doing puzzles together, some arts and crafts. If the children are preparing special occasions like Christmas, songs, and they're just going to visit at the seniors' side, that's something to consider. Right now, and Ms. Tamandong can add a little bit more, right now, the existing facility, it's two separate entities. It's literally divided by a wall. So, the elder side is in compliance of an elder care, and the childcare side is in compliance of a childcare. So, I think all of us here today, it's really just speaking about the possibility or the opportunity, it's as funny as it sounds, break down that wall to really see how we can have partial interaction or engagement between the two different generations. But as far, let me going back to the benefits, the social, you know, and the social benefit and the curriculum, in addition to curriculum, I think the foremost is really the respect and empathy that children learn. We know that, actually, studies have shown there may be some cognitive behavior that the children are learning, they are enhancing, may match the elders, some of their cognitive or even their physical ability decreasing. There's some middle ground that they can complement each other, right? So, I think through the interaction, it's not a strict curriculum, but just based on the interaction, how they develop and enhance empathy, which empathy is not a textbook topic. It's through experience, personal engagement. So, there's definitely a benefit building, enhancing, developing, you know, the value of empathy at an early age so that these children, young children, based on these engagements, they will grow into very respectful, you know, adults with empathy. So, I personally, you know, can attest to that, especially when, just adding a little context, I was the Learning Development Manager in corporate companies, and I've tried to, or in attempt, talk about the topics of empathy as a leadership topic. You can tell that it's a little bit too late to discuss it in some, but I think it's definitely an opportunity. Having a facility and an area or an environment, starting it into generational daycare, these are unspoken, but deeply valued.
Thank you for saying that, because you just answered my next question on even the purpose in the sense for the seniors. How would they grow, right, with their purpose and cognitive skills? So, I appreciate your response. Lonnie, again, thank you for your passion and your commitment and your drive. So, one of the questions I wanted to ask you was, I know you've shared your story to the media and the public before, but can you please share with the committee how you tried to establish your facility as an intergenerational daycare and what barriers you faced? Because there isn't a law explicitly allowing one locally.
Thank you for that question. When I made my testimony, I made it a point to say that I've been faced with opposition, just being straight out denied, turned away. I have made many attempts to have those leaders from Department of Public Health visit my facility or even talk about it. I've not received one email back. When I first decided to open an intergenerational daycare, I went out and I visited the one in Hawaii, and it was amazing. You see children, you see the seniors, and it was amazing. I was so impressed. The director there is Ms. Raquel Ramos, and she, you know, she told me that she would be willing to, you know, share more information to get this going on Guam. But, I did speak with the licensing officer at the time about my idea for intergenerational daycare before I had opened one, before I had even started to build out on one or the business plan. And she had told me that, I asked, would it be an issue to open an intergenerational daycare on Guam? How would it be licensed and all the right questions? I was told that it wouldn't be an issue. It would be licensed the same way because there's already adult daycares that are licensed and childcares that are licensed. And all it would be would be on a program of them getting together, which I believe is really what's happening. We are licensed by Public Health for our childcare side, and we're licensed through Department of Revenue and Tax for our adult daycare side. And we are in compliance, and we follow regulations for both the childcare and the adult daycare already. When we say intergenerational daycare, just like the intergenerational daycare in Hawaii, they are licensed senior center, senior daycare, and a licensed childcare daycare that share a building. It is not loud. You can come to my daycare. The elderly have their separate quarters. It is calm. It is quiet. It has all their areas. There's lockers for their medication. We have a very, very strict medical clearance, health policy. We're following the law. The regulations are already in place. And so, when I hear that there needs to be so much time to develop these regulations, I'm kind of wondering why, because we have developed childcare regulations. We have developed adult daycare regulations. When we say intergenerational daycare, we're going to put together a program so that we can have our grandparents come from their childcare side and their adult daycare side to these shared quarters that is already made to have restrooms for seniors and restrooms for children, that has bars on the wall where our seniors can lean and watch in from a door-type window into a classroom and just observe, to have storytime where we always, we're such an over-regulated, we are so over-regulated, we're over-regulated business. Sometimes I feel like my staff is working for Public Health and not for me. We get phone calls from them, we get visits from them three, four times in a quarter. You know, they know how clean our childcares are, it's clean and it's safe. Nothing compared to the public schools or the hospitals. You come and visit my center, and I promise you, you won't find anything, a speck anywhere, because the regulations are so strict. To go back and say we need all these extra time to make regulations, there are so many regulations that are already made in other existing intergenerational facilities that is so easy to adopt, because I'm telling you now, a lot of things are adopted. We have the GPPD that says our childcare workers need this and that and this and that, but we don't have any resources or training center. Guess who opened the childcare training center? We need to provide more resources for business owners that are trying to take care of our children and our elderly. We are the only private adult daycare, the only private adult daycare. But when we had our, when we had our agency inspections, they told us, the fire department told us, Public Health told us, DEH told us. We don't have regulations for this. We've only have government-run adult daycares. We're going to take pictures of your center and make this first daycare the regulations. But they couldn't do that with the intergenerational. So, it's very inconsistent, and I find it very, very disappointing that I do have people here that are in support, but I've tried reaching out to all these individuals before, and none of them had reached out back. And I just wanted to address the concerns that they had. Medications are already only to be disposed by the director of the center and are kept in the medication log, kept far away from the children. There's already, there's already regulations on how to store medication and medication is given. There are already separate toilet areas and quarters because that is part of just operating an adult daycare or childcare. Almost all the concerns that came up there are already in place at my centers. Separate centers for adult daycare and childcare license. We don't want more overreaching rules and regulations. We don't want Department of Public Health to come in and say, well, you know what, we want to go ahead and be the one to license adult daycare now because you guys are going to be intergenerational. I run four childcare centers, one adult daycare center. It's hard to run childcare centers more than the adult daycare center. They never come and visit the adult daycare center. And that's where I feel that there is not enough done for our seniors, for our manomko. They don't even, I don't remember the last time we received an inspection since we opened for our adult daycare center, while we get inspections three times in a quarter for our childcare centers. The programs are not licensed together. They are two separate businesses. The way the other adult, the other intergenerational centers that I have visited and I've spoke to their directors, the same way, that they just have intergenerational programs. So, the idea of a school visiting St. Dominique, which we do, and we've been doing since 2016, it's almost the exact same thing, except we don't have to pay a big bus fare, and it's literally just steps away to visit them and to sing to them and to have a storytime with them and to hear some, celebrate birthdays with them. Almost all those, I'm going to be completely honest, it's in place. It does not need 180 days. I can make the regulations for you, and I promise it's going to be just as good. There are three separate adult daycare models. There's social, there's health, there's specialty. My adult daycare is a social adult daycare, but we have CNAs on staff. We have nurses on staff. We have social workers on staff. We know that we are serving vulnerable populations, and I want to see more for the island. And that's why I thought, if we start with something as small as an intergenerational daycare where they could spend 30 minutes a day together or share an activity together, then this is going to open up doors for people to say, hey, you know what? We should make more for our seniors, improve the quality of life. When we have our seniors come in, when they first come in, the family are always saying, well, she only sleeps. Well, she doesn't sing. Well, she doesn't dance. You know, we try to tell them the activities that we may have. Oh, they don't do that. When they are in our center, they are singing, they are dancing, they are playing instruments, they do things that they don't normally do at home because they're given a different setting, a different opportunity. Imagine how much more when we involve children. I think there's only good that can come out of it. Grandparents spend time with their grandchildren, and it's the best thing in the world. Back then, my grandmother raised me. We visit, we visit our grandparents' houses all the time. It is a modern-day family. Right now, we're busy. There is, both mom and dad are working, okay? We have to provide for our children, and our children and our grandparents are not seeing each other anymore because we're working all day, we're out of the house. Not only that, we cannot leave our children now with our aging grandparents because they cannot really take care of them the way it was back then when I was growing up. What are, what are other ways that they can see each other than children to visit the childcare and the seniors to be in an adult daycare? Now, grandma can see their grandchildren with help from the staff that, you know, they don't have to be the one running after them. We have teachers for that, you know? They don't have to be the one cooking food for them. We have vendors for that. Age segregation, that's not normal. Everyone's trying to segregate only the seniors together, only the children together. That's not normal. Age segregation, for our children to think that this is normal, to only be around children? They don't get an idea that, hey, you know what? Aging is a normal process. I shouldn't be scared of it. I'm not going to be scared of this old lady that I see with her wrinkles because now I admire it, I'm curious, and I could address it because I'm around them all the time. That's normal. Age segregation's not. But due to the systems being designed to serve one generation and exclude the others, it leads to ageism and negatively impacts both populations. I haven't received any support from GovGuam public agencies. I've reached out to Department of Senior Centers since I even opened my adult daycare. I'm always, maybe they hear my name, they hear the center, it's hung up. I don't get any calls back. I don't get any emails back. And it's been the same when I tried to reach out to Department of Public Health for the intergenerational daycare. I've never received an email back. I have, respectfully, I've sent emails to at least three of the people here representing the Department of Public Health, and I haven't received any, any information back. And that's just me trying to work with them. What do I need to do? What, what can we do so it doesn't have to, you know, go through this whole process? Thank you.
I, you know, I-
Yeah, I, you know, I, I asked that question because I wanted to see what we could do to work. I mean, our, our job is to provide for the basic services for health, education and safety. And as we look at new industries, right? What can we do to make it parity for all, right? And, and if there's a way that we can facilitate, then this is what we're going to do. And, and, and I know that in, in this effort, it's about bringing the folks to the table and seeing how we can work because we are, we are the government. We are, though we're different sex, branches of government, we've got to see what we can do to help facilitate things forward. So thank you for your honesty. Thank you. I, I'm sorry. I didn't mean for you to share your frustration. But this is, this is at least for us, a wake-up call to see how we can work together. So my question will be to Director Ariola. Really thank you for, for being here and, and for your input to address your department's health and safety concerns. I truly appreciate that. Which of the concerns you shared can be addressed in the administrative rules your staff will draft? And which ones do you feel must be enshrined in law?
Senator, first of all, I just want to reiterate the fact that the government or the Department of Public Health and Social Services is in full support of this bill. I can hear and I can feel the frustration of, of Mrs. Tamon Dong. And I recognize that. However, like every industry that's new, we come to the table and we try to come up with joint solutions. So one of the things that, if I can, share is we have regulations for childcare only. And we have rules and guidance for adult daycares. And the concept of intergenerational daycare may not be new to the world, but it's new to Guam. So it's a new industry or a new mindset of thinking. So in approaching that, there should be different or combined, if you will, or time for my department to know more about this industry the way she does. Obviously, she does. She's visited some very successful intergenerational. We haven't. We, it's a new concept. It's not new concept to daycare, but it's a new concept for Guam. So being very mindful that it's new and it's a new industry, we need to make sure that we approach it and we prepare rules and regulations that are separate and apart from just childcare and adult care because it is different. And so I just want to say that that's what's needed. It's, I know it seems like you just put two things together, but it's really not that simple. I mean, it's simple operationally and, and you have that going for you because you've been doing it for a while. But, and you've, and you've learned and you've researched and even spent your own money to go and visit, but we haven't. We need time to do that. And so that's the reason why we ask for more time. I don't think six months is a lot. As I stated, sometimes just that individuals that have to approve it takes two months. I mean, putting it together is one thing. We can, I can guarantee that we'll can put it together quickly. But how about the approval process is a different story. So it's not going to happen as quickly as people think. But we can do it as quickly as possible, but not overnight. So, you know, again, the department, the island, this is a new concept. And so we need to be just as educated as Mrs. Tamon Dong, I'm sorry, Tamon Dong. Tamon Dong is. And she's clearly very knowledgeable because she's been doing her research and things like that and we haven't. So I'm just asking for the, for the time to do such.
Thank you. I know I have a minute left. So to Jane, thank you again for being here and suggesting this bill. Take a stricter stance on who should be disqualified from intergenerational daycares to better protect our children and seniors. I will definitely proffer amendments, hoping with the markup with the good chair to that effect before this bill hits the floor. But I'd also like to ask you to share your experience with intergenerational family life as someone who has raised daughters yourself and whether you would have enrolled your kids in an intergenerational daycare if it was available at that time from my mother's perspective.
I, I think it's a great concept just because culturally for us, we don't have as many manamko here as we would like to have. And, you know, our, our manamko are passing away and I think it is a valuable concept. And I think sometimes people think it's that they're going to be commingled. And like both Tiffany and Lonnie have said, this is a concept where the kids are in one area and the manamko are in another area and they come together maybe once a day, maybe a couple days a week just for a certain songs or certain activities, not for the entire day. And also I would imagine with the adult daycare that there are parameters under which they will accept an adult. You know, they probably won't accept adults that are, that have issues with lashing out or, or issues that where the adults are aggressive or where they are bedridden or that type of thing. So I think that while we do need to regulate, I don't think that this is a wheel that needs reinventing. I think there are regulations out there where we can go and look at what has, what is acceptable in other places and what has, what has been successful in other places. And we can mirror that. And, but, you know, as Director Ariola has said, sometimes the wheels of government move slowly, especially if you are having other agencies that have to approve something and they have to sign off on it and you have to have other avenues of the government, perhaps the Attorney General's office, that they have to review. So there are, sometimes they take two months to review an MOU. So we need to take that into consideration. But I think it's a concept that is definitely valuable for this community and I really would encourage it.
Thank you very much, Madam.
Senator, if I can just add, things are very, you know, intentional and timely, right? So I have the fortunate opportunity Monday to go to the Aging Conference next week. And so how timely? Because that's one of the things that I'm going to be asking about is, as Jane said, if there are intergenerational rules and regulations already out there, I'm just going to have to find it and get it here so that your work, senators, might be a little bit easier because they're proven and they are already vetted, if you will. And, you know, the challenges may have already been tweaked, if you will. So as somebody, so the timing is so perfect because I'm going to an aging conference next week. So other than assisted living facilities that I'm going to be inquiring and I'm going to be visiting, I'm definitely going to be inquiring and hopefully, if possible, maybe visit a well-established intergenerational and ask for their governance policies and bring back. But again, that's just the government side, never having. I just need to get up to par as this fine lady to my right when it comes to education.
I know I have 20 seconds left, Madam Chair, but I just want to say I think it's really good that this is happening. And I think with the support from our office and the government and with the administration, I think we can continue to work closely and add based on the markup that I'm sure you're going to have. And I would really, because I want this industry to work and you guys worked so hard for so many years and, and I'm here to listen and we're here to move it forward. So thank you and thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me the time to ask those questions.
Thank you, Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Gummatautau?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, thank you, everyone, for being here. A special thanks to my friend Dina for being here on behalf of the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce. A bull of support, obviously, from Rachel in the back, the executive director. I know Michaela was here, the vice president. So it was good to see and your board members for being here and supporting this bill. Also, thank you, Tiffany, for, for your presence, Lonnie as well. And I mean, I can't forget, of course, Public Health and the Bureau of Women's Affairs. Just a couple of things, if I could. It's, I mean, I have a little experience with childcare centers. And myself and Tiffany during the pandemic did some work to help as part of the big effort in Gov Guam. And also I've had plenty of work or experience working with our friends over at the Division of Senior Citizens. And I just want to say this for the record, Madam Chair, that there can be a emerging of this. It's an emerging industry for us. So, and I, I appreciate Lonnie, the concern. I think we all agree that Gov Guam can do a better job, not just Public Health, but across all of the other agencies. So you're not alone. And this is, you know, just to say that, just for the record. I just want to share, Madam Chair, that there was a 2021 article from the Stanford Social Innovation Review that recognized that working parents who juggle age segregated care for children and older relatives are denied a simple one-step solution. And at a time when there's a growing demand for childcare and elder care, but limited resources for new facilities, communities really do miss a very crucial opportunity to save money by co-locating existing programs. Now, it's, I'm sure it's, it's gone up a little bit. But since 2021, there's only across America, maybe just less than 200 at the time of intergenerational daycare centers. And I'm hoping that through the help and, and I'm hoping that we can get the help through the markup process to get the Bureau of Women's Affairs to be able to assist in the markup to help maybe identify a couple of resources to where we can use maybe the standard or the center operating procedures that can assist with the bill so that we can attach it as part of this bill. I know you're busy. So I'm, we're going to ask Bureau of Women's Affairs to assist with this particular effort. And there was one more thing I wanted to share, Madam Chair. And I'll ask this of the, the panel. But to help ensure that intergenerational daycare centers are made available to our manamko, obviously, there's kids involved too, particularly those who wish to enroll but may not have the means to pay for these types of services, what ideas, including cost-sharing strategies, could be considered by maybe us here, non-governmental organizations and those who will be responsible for preparing the rules and regulations that are required by Bill 95?
Senator, I just want to say that, given the, the Republicans' focus on the family, let's hope that maybe Congress can include intergenerational daycare in the childcare, in the childcare grant funding and maybe make it intergenerational daycare funding. Maybe that's something that we can talk to Congressman Moilen about, including this because.
I have a point of information, Madam Chair, if I may. Just going through the congressional bills that are on, there is a provision, a bill in place right now that the House of Representatives is working on and I will definitely help and look that through. Our committee will look that through and share with the committee so that we can work further on that.
So Jane, are you writing that letter tomorrow? Or what are you waiting for?
Well, it's interesting because Senator Tina, Ms. Lonnie just whispered it to me, like there's a, there's a movement in Congress. And so again, I'm going to the Aging Conference and so I'm going to inquire with some feds there if they have any status on that. But that's a very good question, Senator Sean, Sean Gummatautau, because as private entities open, they can decide what to charge, you know, as in their business plan, their business model. But what if they can't, right? And so the question would be similar to now. There's a private-owned adult daycare and then there's public, the three public. So what do we do with families who don't have the capacity to, to pay for such a wonderful concept, right? I mean, we were just talking about that. Like, can you imagine if you had a toddler, three-year-old, and then you're also caring for your elderly mother-in-law and you can just drive to one place and drop them both and come back 5:30, 6 o'clock and pick them up? I mean, and know that within the day, grandma is going to see the, you know, the granddaughter because, or, and maybe it can even soothe the granddaughter for separation anxiety. You know, those things can all help, right? But what do we do about that? So that was one of the things, right? I talked about funding. So unfortunately, the federal government thinks like that. Funding for children below five. Funding for adults above 60. So I'm glad to hear that there's some congressional movement on, on how to, because we're going to need that because it's wonderful if you're a family that has the means to pay for that private that has the intergenerational. But I think if it's a new industry, people are going to, similar to daycare, people are going to be looking for some grants or some financial relief, right? So CCDF right now really helps parents pay for cover childcare. That is like fantastic. But we, we need to, we need to look for those kinds of funding for those who cannot afford.
All right. Thank you. And I, I just wanted to, again, Madam Chair, if we can, and to the author, just if we can get the input from the Bureau of Women's Affairs on that particular issue. Thank you very much in advance, Jane. But also I'm hoping that you, we can include the concerns of the three divisions of Public Health. I think they remain important. I know that you're looking for less regulation, Lonnie. But in the case, I, I think we, I'm not saying no because I'm in support of the measure. I think that we just, this is very new, not new to you, but this community deserves that we, we take that time and make sure that we do it right. If we have to go back, as, as Dina mentioned, to maybe make it tighter on maybe on other parts of the statute. But I think right now we want to get this off the ground. And I think that this is the first big step. And again, thank you to Senator Munia Barnes for introducing the measure and thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
Thank you, Senator Gummatautau. Vice Chair, Ada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wow. What an afternoon. You know, I think it's come a long way though from where it was to, to this part of the bill being introduced. You know, intergenerational care. I, I had it in my home for many years, you know? My parents lived with me and my children and they grew up together. They saw my parents grow old. They were there when my parents passed. So I understand. I truly do. I'm glad and I appreciate our regulatory agencies being here and being accept, you know, accepting to this and ensuring that we can bring this forward. And it just goes to show that when we get minds together, is it perfect? It's not, but at least we're moving. We're not stagnant where we were before and we're getting the process going. So we continue to move forward and we'll move it as quickly as possible. But I think we also need to be cautious as we move along. And I'd like to just say, you know, thank you to our, our regulatory agencies for all the work that you do. And, you know, a lot of times, you know, we, us in government, and I say us because we're all in government, we, you know, we, we get, we always get the, the, the hard end of, of the, of the stick, right? But that's expected because public expects us to be receptive to their, to their, their needs and their, their, their calls. So with that said, I just, Madam Chair, I'd just like for us to get the markup meeting moving forward. Let's get this legislation onto the session agenda and let's let it, make it happen so that folks that are, who still have their parents folks that are, who still have their parents and who still have their children and they're able to have them be in one areas, it's a great feeling, because, like I said, my children were able to see my parents grow old, and, you know, the day before my mother left, she goes, told my wife, "Take care of the girls." That's the last word she said before she went to the hospital and she passed. But, you know, it's these things, the memories that we have and we understand and we feel. And, you know, if we're able to continue that in a different setting, and, you know, nowadays, we said it, there's, both parents are working, husband and wife, you know, the couples are always working. So if this isn't a way to take care of both our children and our parents, then we got to just move it forward. Thank you for coming out and expressing your feelings and your thoughts, and, you know, but at least we've come together now, and the regulatory agencies have come down, you guys have come down, and we look forward to moving this bill forward. So, thank you, and thank you to Senator Barnes for having me a part of this legislation. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. I don't have any questions, but, you know, this public hearing actually reminds me of why I decided to run for public office, because I'd been covering the news for so many years. And Lonnie, I remember covering your plight. And now to be in a position to actually effectuate change and seeing everybody speak, I actually want to be a sponsor of this bill, a co-sponsor of this bill, and Sean. And just thank you for continuing this fight, and for the government agencies, Teresa, Jane, Tom, and the rest of Public Health for being here. Thank you guys so much. And, did you want to say something?
Thank you, yeah. I just wanted to add a little something, yeah. So I express some frustration, but I understand the job they have, you know, and I'm happy that they support the bill, and we're looking forward to working with them and, you know, making sure that there are regulations in place so that we can make this a reality. And just to share a little background, when I did decide to open up the adult daycare, I'm taking care of my children and I'm taking care of my parents, my grandmother, you know, so we are in that sandwich generation, and we have to be able to, you know, care for them. And a lot of, like my grandmother, you know, she's very, she's still all there, okay? She could tell you everything all the way back to, she really can. So, when we leave them at home, she's probably spanked me after this, I don't know, but when we leave them at home, because they still want to be independent, you know, we have to create the bridge, you know, they still want to be independent. And so, while we're out working and running our children from soccer to violin and tennis and all that, our parents, me and my husband's parents are at home and they're elderly, and we're finding out that, you know, my father-in-law had a fall, my grandmother had a fall, or they're not able to eat or cook them a hot meal, you know. And so we looked for resources on island of where they can go. My grandma doesn't want to hang out at the mayor's office playing bingo all day, you know. So, we created that adult daycare, and it's far from clinical-looking or like a senior center. It's very homey, and it allows them to come and relax, like a restaurant. There's an area where you can eat and get snacks, and there's a place where you can sleep, there's beds, there's a TV, there's recliners, there's a place where you can do activities, there's a library area where you could read books, there's a computer if they want to learn how to get on the computer, all while still being independent, having their dignity, and being able to be somewhere safe where there's people there that can help them or assist them. And that's where we got the name Helping Hands, we're just trying to help. We're not trying to institutionalize them or anything. And, you know, I think that creating more businesses like this will be the, you know, bridge the gap so that they don't have to go into 24-hour facilities or live-in facilities when they still want to come home at the end of the day. But I just want to thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Speaker Ada, good Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, who introduced this bill and listened to us that day that I, again, expressed frustration, and then Senator Gumatao. I just want to thank you again for the opportunity.
And thank you again to everyone that testified today, Dina, Tiffany, Ms. Tamon Dong, Teresa, and Jane. Senator Munia Barnes, your closing.
Thank you. I promise I'll be sure. Madam Chair, the concept enshrined in Bill 95-30 isn't new to us on Guam or in the Pacific. Certainly, many of us have grown up in homes, like the good Vice Speaker said, where nana and tata are just as present as mom and dad, where young adults keep their grandparents' company and help out with household chores. And we know the benefits to this type of family life. Those in our younger generations learn from the wisdom of their elders, and those who are living in their silver and golden years have the comfort of knowing their minds and bodies are being kept active and protected by loved ones. Allowing intergenerational daycares to operate on Guam will bring this treasured approach to family life to a broader group of people, those who aren't lucky enough to have a nana or tata to learn from, and those who don't have grandchildren to keep them active. According to the 2023 study I mentioned in my opening statement, this model of care can also potentially drive down costs for parents and adults' children seeking care for their kids or elders. But I think the best-selling point was shared by Mrs. Lonnie Tamon Dong, and to paraphrase her wise words for the committee, "Our famagoon are naturally curious, and our manamko are naturally nurturing." Let's leverage this curiosity of children and the encouragement of our seniors to build a better model of care for both. Let's support small businesses who cannot move forward without government action, and let's help our working families who need qualified, quality care for their loved ones. Let's say yes to intergenerational daycare centers. And I really want to thank all of you guys for being here, and Madam Chair, for staying here and listening to this bill and knowing that we want to bring a new industry, and we want to do it, because a lot of us were raised that way, and we want to share that gift that we were blessed with. So, wondunkul in the sijus masi, and definitely make all of you guys co-sponsors. It's such a blessing. Now I need, one, two, three, four, I need four more to get this passed, but hoping we can get a unanimous support for this. Sina masi.
Thank you, Senator Munia Barnes, and to all of you who provided testimony today, and those of you who are watching online and engaging from home, thank you. Your voice matters, and your participation helps ensure that our government remains transparent, accountable, and more importantly, responsive to the needs of our people. For those of you who would like to submit written testimony and weren't able to provide any today, you can email it to office.senatorbri@guamlegislature.org, and you have 10 days to do that. This concludes today's confirmation hearing. It is now 4:59 PM. We are adjourned.